Please. And Ms. Madeline, would you please take a roll call for the library agenda, please?
Trustee Craven?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Morgan?
Here.
President Pro Tim Little?
Here.
President Kildee?
Here.
Flag salute. Mrs. Craven, would you mind leaving us tonight?
Certainly. Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. President.
Public comments? This is just for the library. Does any public like to make any comments for the library? Seeing nobody pick a mad dash forward, we're going to go down to the item three, which is a consent calendar?
Move the approval.
Second. So motion is second and no further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay. Departmental no items. Any comments from staff tonight, Richard? Do you have any comments tonight?
Yes, Your Honor. We have a presentation of Joe Rolfe, our new library director.
Welcome.
Council members and mayor, thank you so much for welcoming me to the city. I was here as supervising librarian for three years, and I've been away at City of Moore Park as library director over there for three years, and it's a pleasure to come back. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Glad to have you. Would you have any comments or anything? Niels?
We were just going to see if you had any questions for us or Joe?
All right. Let me ask any questions from any of us.
Welcome.
Yes.
And welcome back again.
Thank you so much.
And Bill and I did have a chance to speak with you over at the, I guess it was staff introductions and stuff over at the meeting, and you have a good reception from the staff and so on. So I look forward to dealing with you and working with you.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much, and it was a pleasure to see you at our old staff day training on Friday. Thank you for coming.
All right. Welcome. Appreciate your time. All right. Anything else, Richard, from his staff members?
No, that's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Any comments from the library trustees? Any comments tonight?
Yes. Oh, no. Sorry.
No, okay. You did a great summer, great program for the summer. It was really successful. Appreciate all the efforts. All right. With no further comments, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Call this meeting the Camrio Sanitary District Board of Directors to order and ask the record to reflect that all board members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Chair.
We move down to the consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Comments from staff?
No comments from staff.
Comments from board members?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just that you and I both attended the water conference, I shouldn't say water conference, even though it was a water conference, up in Monterey, the CASA meeting. A little slow the first day, but the second day was very good.
I thought it was excellent.
Yeah. The second day was excellent. And we're looking to see what other people are doing and how they're pushing their, not just desal plants, but other things into effect, makes me hope we can get ours approved next month so we can get started. But other than the fire smoke and stuff, we had to see up there in that big fire, Big Sur, and that thing is still burning out of control, so it's unfortunate. But they're protecting the redwoods. Firemen, there's many firemen staying, all the hotels, they're full, and they told us what they've been doing. So it's mainly burning a lot of brush on the hills and mountainsides. So I'll let you talk about it.
It was so smoky that the bellboys were wearing masks.
Mm-hmm. In Monterey.
In Monterey. I've never seen it quite that smoky when you were removed from where the fire was. Anyway, it was an excellent conference. So, any other business? This meeting's adjourned.
I'm going to call the Camrio Successor Agency to order. Let the record reflect that all councilmen, all board members are here. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Mayor.
Amendments, excuse me. Public comments? Do we have any public comments on the Camrio Successor Agency? I see none. Move the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion is second for the approval. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Resolutions, excuse me, sorry. Now we're going to departmental items. Tom, is that you? Not Tom, but... Agreement for National Housing Consulting Services? Yeah, the Finance Director.
Yes. Good afternoon, honorable mayor, members of the city council. This professional services agreement is for Ross Now Spavichak.
Could you please talk into that microphone or turn it on, one or the other?
It's on.
There you go.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. This item before you tonight is for the professional services agreement for the Ross Now Spavichak Group, otherwise known as RSG. Previously, RSG has worked with the city, excuse me, the successor agency, in preparing a variety of tasks associated with the successor agency dissolution, previously known as Redevelopment Agency. So the three items that RSG has previously performed for the successor agency, which also needs to be done on an annual basis, is to prepare the recognized obligation payment schedule, otherwise known as ROBS, whether that be the annual ROBS or the last and final ROBS. Also, the continuing disclosure report for the tax allocation bonds, or otherwise known as basically our debt issues that we have. This continuing disclosure report is a financial report that lists any deficiencies or anything of disclosure that is then disseminated to a national depository called Emma, where any bondholder can then obtain that report as they are bondholders of those tax allocation bonds. And then separately, we have SB Senate Bill 341, which is the housing report that is required by the state, and that piece of it is actually part of the general fund, but by way of the staff report and the professional services agreement, we're doing it all at one time. But for the purposes of the successor agency tonight, staff is only asking for the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the professional services agreement for the two items related to the successor agency, which is the preparation of the ROBS for $15,000 and the continuing disclosure report preparation for $4,500. However, we do request an additional appropriation out of fund balance of $3,500, as $16,000 has only been budgeted. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Questions? Seeing none, thank you for your report.
I'll move the approval as recommended in the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments? Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Do we have any legal items this evening, or Mr. City Attorney?
No, we don't.
Any other comments from the staff?
No, Mayor.
Seeing none, we'll adjourn. Until next time. Okay. Now, we'll call the city council meeting to order. Finally, we get around to the council meeting, folks. We had to get those other bodies out of the way first. Okay. We've already done our pledge. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Mayor.
Your Honor, I would like to pull a couple items from the consent calendar.
Which ones?
I'd like to pull 3F.
3F.
And I'm assuming that will be General Services or Public Works? Which one? Public Works?
Is that Public Works? Okay. What's the other one?
And the other one is M. And on that one, I'd just like to vote on it separately, so I don't need a staff report, unless someone else does.
Okay. Any other comments? Others to be polled? Okay. Now move down to the consent calendar.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F, which is being moved to Public Works, and item M, which we will vote on separately.
Okay. Now we can vote, but I think you have to, before we vote, though...
Did you have a second? You don't have a second?
Oh, we have a second?
I have a second.
You normally hear a second pretty quick. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. You did want to vote separately on that one item.
Now she did it without M, so now you vote on M.
Yeah. Okay. She didn't manage to...
I'll move to approve item M on the consent calendar.
Second? Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a second. Please vote. That motion passes four to one. Would you like to give the reasons why?
He didn't answer none. Well, you can say that Mrs. McDonald voted no, and it's because I disagree with that project in its entirety, so I'm not going to...
Okay.
This is the one that's on the off-ramp of the freeway.
That motion passes four to one. Next item on the agenda is the city council items. There are none. Finance item, zero. Anything from finance that I don't know about? Okay. And we're going to community projects. Oh, wait, Public Works. Let's go to item number 3F.
You want me to tell you why I asked it to come out?
I think we would.
When I look at the map, I obviously know where the Camrio Ranch is, and the project says on the map that it's, looks like it's the whole thing. And so I would like to talk a little bit about what is actually being proposed to be paved in this piece.
Right. So, yes, the map does show the entire Camrio Ranch House project as the general location map for the project, and as generally described in the staff report, but I'll more specifically address, based on the request from the ranch house to look at creating additional paved parking spaces on the west side, right when you come in that driveway headed towards, with the barn on your left, immediately to the right is more or less an access area right now. That's dirt and is used for parking during meetings and events, and so that would be the area that is going to be looked at. This action here is soliciting RFQs for design services to initially look at what is feasible in that space. Staff has looked at it in general, and it is feasible to create a paved area for parking along with improving that access area. And in general, we're looking at possibly 10 parking spaces there. It is somewhat narrow, and varying width with vegetation and trees out there. The intent would be to preserve as many of the mature trees as possible, and options under the design will be looked at for possibly maintaining the drive area as not paved, possibly decomposed granite surface or a compacted gravel type surface for the drive area, and then paved surfaces for the parking areas. Those would be items that would be looked at under design.
Can I ask a question?
Can I ask an issue? I can add the floor.
I'm sorry.
So are you talking about paving all the way down the whole side then, or is it just a portion in order to get the slots that you want?
Well, the access would be created from that top main driveway and then continue on down for circulation purposes and to maximize parking spaces that you would essentially pull in there, park, and then upon leaving, most likely continue south to that southern driveway access.
So you're talking about doing the whole thing down to the other gate?
Correct. And again, the whole thing being through the design determining what the extensive pavement would be required to accomplish that access and parking spaces. So it's not necessarily, at this point, can't say we would just blanket pave everything that's dirt out there right now, but really the first step would be based on the size that's there, how many parking spaces could realistically be achieved out there, and then that would, portion would be paved along with the access width needed to access those parking spaces.
I guess my concern is, and I usually end up parking in there, and it doesn't bother me one bitch to park in the dirt. It's a ranch after all. I can see doing a little work at the beginning where the trash enclosure is and where you go down that initial little bump that there is there, and reconfiguring the trash, because it does sit out there at the beginning. But I personally don't quite understand why we're proposing to pave that whole side. Your Honor, I made the request on behalf of the ranch after their retreat. I don't know what Mr. Little's question is, but maybe I could explain why they asked for it.
Well, I think Mr. Little and I both are on that foundation, along with you, and they've been asking for that for...
Well, three of you, three of us aren't.
Excuse me? I said at one time, we all were on that board. I was on it with, I'm on with Charlotte now, and I was on it with Bill, and they had requested that a long time ago. And we've spoken about it, and we've talked about it. Go ahead.
Could I explain why this particular request was made? At several functions, at most functions, a lot of us park there, but when there's somebody at the gate directing at larger functions, they direct handicap people. When all of the other handicap is parked, is filled up there, it's very difficult for people with walkers and canes to be on the gravel with the potholes and such as it is now. It also is difficult for people in wheelchairs to move through the gravel and through the ruts as they are now, and they felt that it would be much better if that, they had asked that it be reserved for handicapped. I'm not sure when staff looked at it, they said they already have the state mandated required whatever number of handicap spaces. So I think they thought, they being the ranch board, thought that they couldn't name handicap. I don't know if you can have extra handicap parking or not, but right now it's in design looking at where and how much would be paved. I agreed with them that it made sense, because our handicap numbers are increasing, to use that for additional handicap parking, because I have been at many, many events out there where the vast majority of the people who attend the events are past retirement age, and many of them have difficulty walking. So it made sense to me, and it still does.
You mean, you're saying that the whole area would be handicapped?
Well, I don't know. That's to be determined yet, but the...
Because that'd be empty, half of it.
It seems to me the obvious answer to me is, is you put your extra handicap parking up on top and direct the other people that can walk more easily down into that area. Well, we had proved it. It saves us a lot of money, and it also, to me, keeps the look of the ranch being a ranch instead of just all this pavement out there. So that was my thought. Your Honor, we did discuss this earlier, and I believe Mrs. McDonald disagreed with it and voted against it, but we discussed it at CIP time or at some other time.
Agreed. We did.
And the majority of us approved this project. Is it in the CIP?
Yes, it is.
In what year?
Yes, it is. This current fiscal year.
In 1617?
That's correct.
Well, I can still disagree now, and I can do...
Now, I...
I know. I was just pointing out that...
Time out, time out, we're all getting out of order.
We'd had this discussion.
I have a question. Are we going to deal with the trash enclosures as part of this project?
Yes, that is, will be a part of the initial design effort, will be a feasibility for both the parking and...
To relocate those?
...what to do with reconfiguring that parking, or trash enclosure, excuse me, to maximize the access and parking.
Well, that was originally put together when the ranch was changed over from just a ranch to what we have now, and it was sort of a last minute thought as to where we put the trash enclosure. I don't think it's ever been a place where we should have kept it, but it was done and done, so I'm glad to hear that we're looking at where we could store the stuff out of sight. Thank you.
One more thing before we go out of this. We recently had a project over at the airport where they're going to park cars. We would not let them use dirt to park cars on. That was a no-no. They had to do a, remember when we had to change and have that little thing with Todd about making sure they got appropriate parking over there so it doesn't, the oil doesn't get into the ground and a lot of other things? Well, I think that's one of the same things we've got here, and so I think we have to meet some certain criteria.
Is that true?
Yes, it's true.
I'm asking Public Works Director.
Some of that has to do with the runoff and stormwater requirements, which those requirements will be addressed in this project. Different types of paving, all-weather surface materials are acceptable to meet those as long as other provisions are made to satisfy the stormwater requirements.
Right.
I have a question.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'll move the approval of this...
Kevin has a question first, Charlotte.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick here. Is there a policy that we have that deals with anything of this nature? Do you know?
You mean hard service parking?
Yeah. That we try to preclude that as much as possible in public places? Is there any policy that...
Precluding what?
If at all possible that we make the parking as safe as possible, of course, with dirt vis-à-vis an asphalt or a cement or a hardened surface. Is there anything that we have in our...
Our parking ordinance does require either concrete or asphaltic pavement typically as part of parking lot design, yes.
So I can now, Charlotte?
Did you have a question? No. I'll move the approval of this item as recommended in the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments? Please vote. That motion passes four to one. Move to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the agreement. This is under community development.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Morgan. Bob Boro will be presenting this item.
Just, okay, wait a minute. So we're on community development. We are on the Cedar Oak Project.
Yes.
I do have to make the announcement that I will be abstaining from this and excusing myself. The developer in question is a client of the firm to which I am employed, so while I have no direct financial interest in this, just to make sure there's no perception of such, I will be leaving the room.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Bob Boro, and I've been asked to present this item to you. This is in your agenda packet, and it's for the proposed agreement for the sale and development of real property. It particularly involves the Cedar Oak Project, as it's been known, within the Old Town Camrio area. The site is on the south side of Inter Boulevard between Cedar and Oak Drives in Old Town Camrio, and as you can see from the aerial, it's surrounded by other retail establishments in Old Town Camrio along Ventura Boulevard, and is, has been for a number of years vacant property. It has a bit of history. The properties were acquired by the former Redevelopment Agency back in 2010, following the site being designated as blighted, and the inability of the prior owners to implement their project approvals. The city looked at the property and recognized that it was an important site along Old Town Camrio, and did take the opportunity to acquire the properties by purchase from the former owners. The city then was involved with the cleanup and clearing of the process. The property had issues with blighted buildings, police reports from people breaking in, camping out there. There was DDT in the soils, lead-based paints, asbestos, and hydrocarbons in the soil. So at that point, the city then commenced with the cleanup of the site by removing the structures and going through the necessary approvals to subsequently get sign-off by the county environmental health for the contamination on the property. City also then initiated the design process for mixed-use development for the site, and conditional use permit 330 was subsequently approved, and allotments have been awarded for the residential units within the mixed-use project. That project is in force and effect, and taking that being the catalyst to move it forward, the city then solicited proposals from private developers for the property, and last year, the city did enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Aldersgate LLC. Aldersgate LLC is here this evening, and they have submitted a letter stating that upon the approval of this, that they would then enter into the execution of the agreement as well. The site is just under six-tenths of an acre, and it's owned by the City of Camrio Successor Housing Agency, and it's part of the Camrio Old Town Design Guidelines area. It's within the Old Town Parking District, and the site is currently vacant. It has been approved for the development of 22 apartment units, as well as retail on the ground floor area containing approximately 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. The property was acquired through the bond proceeds for the housing bonds as part of the Redevelopment Agency, and then was turned over to the Successor Housing Agency in the post-Redevelopment era. You can see on the left a photo of the prior garage that was on the property, and then the demolition process, and you can see a picture where the city had to go in and get those last couple scoops of dirt that, after the tank removal, were determined to still have hydrocarbons in the soil. Following that cleanup and the environmental assessments that have been done on the property, then the city did receive a sign-off from the county environmental health for the property. As part of the design process, the city went through a review with Main Street Architects for the design of a project for that, so again, that the city could be the catalyst to get interest in the property and to identify what would be a project fully approved and then be turned over to private redevelopment. The building is two and three stories in height, and again, was previously approved by the city. It follows the design guidelines for the Old Town Camrio, includes a variety of materials and fenestration treatments, breaking up the facade and fitting in with the design of the other buildings along there. You've seen a couple of recent mixed-use buildings, one under construction, a couple previously built, and this would be one of the last vacant sites along the Boulevard. So it's been kind of important, missing piece of the Old Town streetscape.
Question, Bob, for you. Can you go back to that picture? Can you go back to that picture?
This one?
Yes. Is that, the new building they're putting in down by 2088, has got a lot of that brick and, that's going to be a neat building when we're finished, but is this also brick frontage to kind of match that kind of a theme?
Yes, it has portions of brick, stucco and stone, and railing and other kinds of materials. The design guidelines for Old Town reflect a kind of an eclectic mix, the one that you're talking about that is currently under construction, is more, is a little different style, but again, the area's been designated, the fact that over years, different buildings have been built there, and allows for a variety of styles, so long as they are of interest and they're segmented, so it looks more like a village area rather than a singular larger building.
Okay.
So with regard to the housing aspect of it, again, the property was acquired and cleared using housing bonds. Post-Redevelopment, it did become part of the successor agency holdings. The city went through the process to retain the property so that they could then be ultimately used as what they were established for. The housing portion of the site will be subject to an affordability agreement, and that is one of the documents included in your packet this evening. The sale of the property, and the staff report identifies it would be $1.164 million for the property, that was from an appraisal that was done prior to entering into escrow with Aldersgate, or into the ENA with Aldersgate. So the funds that will be based upon the value of the property will then be turned back to the LOMOD housing fund so that those can be used as, in addition to the remaining housing bonds and such. The Cedar Oak facility will provide that the residential units be retained for up to moderate income households, and the agreement does include a monitoring program. These are all stipulations that stem from the post-Redevelopment requirements. So you have in your packet the agreement that provides for the sale and development of real property. The city attorney's office has prepared all of these documents. They're in for your review. They have been reviewed with Aldersgate, and they are in concurrence with the documents. They include the actual agreement, the legal descriptions, the access map, the site plans. They're committed to complying with what the city had designed and approved under the conditional use permit, and they have actually even already gone ahead and submitted into plan check for building permits in accordance with the ENA. It includes the affordability housing agreement. That'll run with the property. The certificate of completion guaranteeing that they're going to actually complete the project on schedule, and the grant deed for the... and the grant deed for the sale through the escrow. There's a memorandum of agreement stipulating those conditions that are important for the city to be able to sell this property and make sure that it gets done in accordance with certain standards, and then the schedule of performance. As part of the review process and the negotiation, as Aldersgate was preparing their construction documents to make sure that it's all going to work out, both in terms of their pro forma and the site survey, there were some issues and some nudging of some of the plans. They have filed an administrative modification for consideration of some changes, and I wanted to run through those with you, just so that you know that there's pending change. This is fully within the CUP that has been approved for the project, which allows for minor modifications. The thing specifically that they're asking for, and again, based upon the site survey, you know, trying to fit all of that on a property that you don't know exactly to the hundredth of an inch as to what it is, provides for, and so they're asking for some changes to the parking. They need to meet current accessible parking standards, so there'd be accessible parking requirements complied with. There was one newer building code issue that did come up, and there was consideration of a deck on top of one of the roofs of the buildings. However, that would require additional egress points, and rather than having stairways come off the front of the building or the side of the building, they've asked that that be deleted in favor of the plaza level that they do have provided for within the project. Also, some of the parking along the alley would be adjusted to provide the requisite backup space to meet the public works standards, and there were conditions attached to the CUP to incorporate a loading zone and trash enclosure areas. So those are now reflected in the changed plans. And the three townhouse units which are on the east side of the property, they have gone and proposed that instead of three townhouse units, that they be four stacked units, so there'd be two at the street level and two above with stairways leading up to those. If it's within the same building massing, so the exterior appearance is not altered, but it would change the unit mix from 22 to 23. As part of their pro forma, they have identified that they would like to eliminate the one studio in favor of a one-bedroom unit, that it's going to be more marketable, and so they would have 13 one-bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom flats as part of their project, and all of the units would again be part of the affordability agreement. The additional unit did not receive an allocation, it wasn't anticipated, so that unit would have to fall under an exemption under the development allotment process as a lower-income unit. So 22 up to moderate and one lower-income unit, all fitting within the same building massing. They provided the additional parking to comply with those requirements as well. So these are the changes. Now, that administrative modification is pending, the consideration of the agreement, and would be subject to an administrative review as well, but those are changes that would be incorporated within to the proposed change.
Your Honor, I have a question on the change.
Go ahead.
You said that the townhouse units would be collapsed, and there'd be four, three townhouse units would be collapsed, and there'd be four stacked flats, and you said two of them would be at street level. I thought everything at street level was going to be businesses.
Oh, this is on the side street. Let me go back to the.
Behind the businesses.
Yeah. This is Ventura Boulevard. If you go up this street here, there was a portion of the building, as you transition to the residential neighborhood, that were three townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so the next steps are that your staff is recommending that the agreements be approved. They would be executed immediately upon that. They would, escrow would be opened. There's a certain amount of timeframe to go through escrow to make sure that all of the plans go through building permit and public works review and so forth, to complete the plan check process, obtain their permits, and then at the time that the grading permit is issued, it's scheduled that the escrow would close, and then they'd be able to go ahead and grade and then get their building permits, and then operate and manage the property subject to the terms of the agreement and the conditional use permit. So that's kind of a summary of the materials that are in your packet and where it's kind of gone over the years getting up to this last point, just as we indicated last month that we were very close and that we were hopeful to get to you this month with the agreements. We were able to do that, and again, the city attorney's office has done a lot of work in preparing those agreements, and the developer has gone through all of their exhaustive review to develop plans, make sure it's, they're going to fit, and then subsequently some of those little issues under the pending minor modification. So we'd be happy to address any questions. Again, we have representatives from Aldersgate as well.
I have just one real quick question, and that is, the audience hasn't seen, is that open-air restaurant still going to be open to the top? If you go back to the picture of the, we saw the bottom, no, one more.
Yeah, this is the street along here. There's a tower here which includes a stairway, or, excuse me, an elevator here, and then at one of the tenant spaces is earmarked for a restaurant with an indented area and area for sidewalk dining.
Show them that, because you can see the indentation.
That's right down here, and then there'd be some trellis areas over that, and then as you, you can see it again here, the residential units are on the second and third floor here and the second floor here with business spaces along there. The business spaces are designed completely different. They've got taller ceilings, they will provide for the basic structure, but then the tenant improvements would come along with once they have leases assigned. They've already launched their leasing program, interest for that, and they've had a lot of success on, at least in terms of getting interest and such for that.
So this restaurant will be kind of European-style, be open, instead of being out on the sidewalk, you'll have open air in the middle and the restaurant around it also?
Rather than some of the ones that were kind of after the fact, this was with the design process set up so that there would be a small seating area and then a small interior area. It's not, it's a smaller-sized scale, but because of the parking constraints and so forth, but it is an important element of that. And then that tower also accommodate for, you know, the air handling for the exhaust for cooking and so forth as well.
Bill?
Well, I think you just answered my question. With this restaurant, I had some concerns as to whether or not there was some planning that would exhaust the air and not have the odors from the restaurant permeate the residential units.
Yes, from that standpoint, and also fire department requirements, environmental health and so forth. Yes, that was a requirement of the design of the project and the, be able to do that from the ground up, including all the other things necessary, sewer lines and grease traps and such.
The other question I have, and that is, assuming everything goes along in accordance with, been laid out here, what would be the earliest that this project could be available to be rented or used and so forth?
There is a schedule attached identifying significant steps. At this point, they are in building plan checks, so as soon as they can, they want to get their building permits. The, probably the longest lead time going from here to when they could actually start construction would be going through the public works plan check for all of the utilities and the sidewalk, right-of-way improvements and so forth. So that tends to take them, but they are either in plan check or shortly getting into plan check for that as well, so they're moving right along.
Other questions? Kevin?
Yeah, Bob, the retail, I'm going to talk a little bit about the retail space here. It's about 6,100 square feet. Am I right on that?
Well, it is on the gross side, but by the time you actually net things out for, you know, restrooms, utilities, and so forth, yeah.
So does that constitute mostly the restaurant there with that?
No, it was kind of planned for up to four tenant spaces, and the restaurant would be one of the four, up to one of the four tenant spaces. And with the fact that you have this entrance leading to the elevator here, this area here is a separate portion of the retail from down here, so a couple spaces here and maybe one, two, or three tenant spaces along the east end of the building, if you will.
Okay, so, I mean, 2,000 square feet for a restaurant isn't real big, so.
No, and it's not intended to be a large restaurant, kind of a smaller, smaller area kind of thing.
And then the rest of the retail kind of infill with the restaurant kind of being?
Yeah, and again, the idea is that it is village-like, you want a smaller variety of tenant spaces in there as well.
Have they had any interest that you know of in the other spaces there, or is that?
Last, well, it's been several months now, they've already retained a commercial broker. They have put this out through the normal review process, and they've received fairly substantial interest, or, you know, we want more information, and so they're working that through as well.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Ms. Grayman?
We have discussed and discussed and discussed this for several years, and I can remember the exercises we went through in the planning of how it was going to look and all that, and with the exception of the pending changes, I think this is going to be pretty much like we had planned it, and as I said, we've been planning for years, and I think we all agreed that this was going to be a very, very good part of developing Old Town and bringing people to Old Town. I mean, we're going to have them living right there, so it's going to have new businesses, and I think this is going to re-energize Old Town, and it's certainly going to do things for a part that's been just sitting there as a dirt lot for a long time, and before that, it was sitting there as an old gas station and a, the nursery had closed and become a koi pond, and then that closed, so this is going to do a lot for that part of the Boulevard, and I would move the approval.
No, we have to let this, I need to let the opponent speak, if he wants to.
It's not a public hearing.
No, but he mentioned he's here, if he wanted to say.
They're here if you have any questions.
I will move that we authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I'd like to say one thing. It goes long before that, there was a gas station there with a, here, Happy Days, that movie series Happy Days, with all the booths and all the kids went there. I was there a long time ago, and there's a freeway off-ramp right there at Caltrans, it's too short, later on they closed it. I think that cut that whole thing off, but now we've got something I think is going to be a very positive asset for the community. If you see what's going on on the Boulevard at, next to 2088, that new building, this is going to be like that. It's going to look beautiful. You're going to enjoy it. Please vote. That motion passes four to zero with Ms. Jan McDonald abstaining. I'll wait till she gets back in here. I think we should now go to the, allow the folks to speak, because we're going to go to closed session. It's already, only have 14 minutes, 15 minutes. If it's okay with the city council, I'd like to move to open session, not open session, but we have comments from the community, because we do have an item in closed session that does affect the community, so is that okay with the council? No objections? Okay.
Did you want me to announce the closed sessions then, at this time? All right. We have a conference with Real Property Negotiator Authorities Government Code Section 549 56.8. The property's the former fire station. The agency negotiators, negotiating parties are listed in the agenda under negotiation or price and terms. We have a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. The number of cases is two. And finally, we have a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The case name and case number are listed in the agenda.
That in mind, I'm going to open for comments from the community. I have two cards, but I have a whole lot of cards, folks that turned them in, and thank you for doing this, because if we had a halt, all of you speaking wouldn't get our meeting finished and have to come back at 7:30. But the ones that speak this evening are going to be, first, Michael Ronan. Mike, you and I have talked about this many times over at school.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, members of city staff. As you know, my name is Michael Ronan, and as the principal of St. Mary Magdalene School, I always appreciate the opportunity to come before this group and our community to share our continued plans and to work in partnership with the City of Camrio. Last week, our school community welcomed 271 students and families back for the beginning of the school year. I always enjoy the start of a new academic year, for one, because the school is too quiet without the bubbling and excited children during the summer months, but more importantly, it is the start of something new, new endeavors, new challenges, new opportunities for growth, and new opportunities for us to move forward to better serve our students, and by extension, better serve the entire community of Camrio. Tonight in your closed session, you will have the opportunity to continue this forward movement, and I humbly ask that you direct our wonderful city manager to enter into negotiations with St. Mary Magdalene Parish and School for the purchase of the entire fire station, building, and land located on the site of the former fire station. Our offer from June 7th still stands, and we would welcome formal feedback from the city on how we might work together to better the future for our entire community. Our goals remain the same, to expand our campus footprint in order to offer more opportunities and programming for our students, families, and the surrounding community, to increase safety for our students and their families by reconfiguring our traffic patterns, and finally, and perhaps most importantly for this audience tonight, to create a welcoming gateway for all those entering our city by developing a synergy between the chapel and fire station properties. I come before you tonight wearing many hats. As the principal of our school, I certainly have the desire and passion to continue to improve our school community and to help us to grow. As a father of a young son and a second on the way, I hope that we can continue to protect our youngest and most vulnerable citizens. Finally, as a resident of Camrio, I hope that we can find a way to work together to pen a new chapter in the rich history of our beautiful city. I'll close tonight by quoting the poet Walt Whitman from his poem, "Oh Me, Oh Life," as he wrote, "That the powerful play goes on, and you may contribute a verse." The question before us tonight is not whether or not we will pen a verse in this moment in history, but what will that verse be? Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Comments, yes, go ahead.
May I ask a question? Just to make sure I understand, what would you propose to use the fire station itself for, or would you take that structure down and build something new? Can you tell me a little bit about what your plan would be?
The vision would be to use the property to move the parish offices down to that property and to allow a bigger footprint for the campus for future expansion for a gymnasium.
So it wouldn't be used for any students? It would be all adults, office staff, et cetera?
Student services, some meetings with parents, things like that.
And pantry, talk about the pantry, you're also going there possibly.
Possibly the food pantry.
Uh-huh.
So, and then, so that's open to outside visitors, so to speak, rather?
The food pantry serves, yeah, it serves the entire community of Camrio.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
And are there a lot of people coming and going to that, or is that something that's?
Yes, no, every Monday afternoon.
Just one day a week? People, okay.
You might also, Mike, talk, tell her about, when you mentioned the gymnasium, they don't, I'm not sure if they know how to picture where it's going to be. The reason you have to have these offices moved and so on.
Sure.
Could you let them know what those plans are?
Sure, so the, kind of the thought right now, and certainly this is all very preliminary as we're waiting for further direction from the council in moving forward, but the vision would be to move the parish offices, which are currently right next to the school building, down to where the former fire station is, also allows for conference rooms, things like that, for different groups that use the facilities, which would then allow us to build a gymnasium next to the school buildings, you know, to serve the students, to serve, you know, the entire parish community, and certainly, you know, the parish serves and is welcoming to all those in Camrio, not limited to our Catholic population.
Let them also know about the movement of the priests into another residence somewhere?
And that would be part B, would be finding a house for the priests to move to, as we all know, we want them to have a wonderful place to be.
I'm just trying to give enough room so they can imagine a gymnasium there.
Sure.
Because priests will be leaving too.
Sure, and we've worked extensively with Main Street, so I think you mentioned Main Street Architects before, so they're familiar with, you know, workings with the city and that relationship with the city of Camrio as well.
And would this involve reconfiguring your basketball courts and all of that areas? You'd be looking at the whole?
That potentially, that would open up into more parking for the folks, and so instead of spilling out into the surrounding neighborhoods and we have bigger functions and parking on the Boulevard, and, you know, unfortunately, sometimes taking parking spots away from folks trying to come and do business with the offices there on Glen. on Glen, the, the farther part of the Boulevard.
So it wouldn't be used for students anymore, it's because you'd have the gymnasium then? Is that...
The gymnasium would be there. Potentially during the day, we could double it for student use during the day. And certainly that would be a conversation to have, again, after further direction from, from the council. We've, we haven't gone into too much detail and researched as obviously as we've waited for, a little more direction from, from the council. We've had a, a good, open conversation with the city manager and, and some members of the council as well, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Oh, Kevin.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I'm on firm ground here. So the fire station, you rehab that and use that for the various functions that you just already, let, told us about?
That's our current thought process. Now, again, we haven't been able to go and do much research into the structural integrity of the building and, and fire life safety, things like that. We, we did do a preliminary study in terms of the removal of asbestos and lead and, and received a bid for, for some of those remediation projects.
And you're aware it's potentially a pretty big rehab?
Yes.
You understand that?
Yes, yeah.
I understand. I think you've taken a tour of it, have you not?
I have.
Yes.
Yeah.
So he's seen, he's seen it.
A few maybe other residents of Camarillo as well, so.
Yes. Thank you very much for your comments, Mike.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Last speaker is John German. I think it's Jermaine or German? German. The double N, I wasn't sure.
That's a hard G. I just want to give a comment to, to the mayor and the council, and I wanted to say why I think that this is such a win for the city of Camarillo. One time we were down, we have 11 children, nine boys, two girls, they've all gone to parochial school. So we were sitting on the beach in Mexico and a family, a, a judge invited all his judge friends to come down. And my wife was sitting on the beach with one of the judges, and she says, "You have all those children? Isn't that kind of crazy? Because you're making the people in the city support you." And she says, "No, all of our children have gone to parochial schools and we have supported your children to go to school." And she said, "Yes, that's a real win." She says, "I'll have to take back what I said, and I'm sorry I said anything that was negative towards you about having so many children there." We have right now three grandchildren at Mary Magdalene. Our daughter graduated from there. We have another one that's at St. Bonaventure that graduated from there, and none of them are being paid for by the city. And you know how expensive it is for individuals, for each individual student in the state of California for education. And this is a win-win situation for the city as far as I can see. That's all I have to say right now.
Hang on a second. Any other comments or questions?
Just fortunately, we don't have to pay for the students at the state of California, thank goodness, because we couldn't afford that.
Yeah.
Congratulations for you, anyone who can raise 11 children. Oh, my goodness.
You know, I, I grew up with six of us and that was enough. I can't try and figure out you're doing 11.
It was good.
Wow.
And we have 35 grandchildren and some more will be going.
Wow.
You need your own school.
Thank you, though.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I need his own city pretty soon.
Oh, my gosh.
I've read the comments of those who have submitted, there are quite a few, very good comments. They're on a positive side, which I, I enjoy, people coming along and not saying, "You've gotta do this," or "You gotta do that," but, but we've had a long time to consider this and we're coming down to the final decision. And so I thank you for your comments, folks. And Mike's been working with us a lot on the side, trying to figure out what we could do just in case, but I think we've got some stuff coming up. We have closed session now. City attorney?
I've announced the closed sessions. Did you want to cover any other items that were on the five o'clock agenda?
Attorney Development.
Okay, I'll just ask the question.
I, I'd rather have the...
Mr. Mayor, we can defer those other items until later on this evening, we should move on to our study sessions.
Yes. We'll now recess to study session, folks, and thank you for appearing here and giving us your comments. Thank you very much. Camera City Council, please, excuse me? Camera City Council, please come to order. Let the record reflect that all city council members are present. Could we please stand for the flag salute? Mr. Little, could you lead us in flag salute?
Please join me in slaying the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening, so we'll go right into our public, public comments time. This is a time for comments that are not on the agenda, on items that are not on the agenda. I have several cards here. Are these all agenda items? I take it these are all agenda items, cards, correct?
Public comments.
Comments, I mean. Okay, then we'll move into the public, we'll move, there's no public comments tonight.
These are all public comments?
No, I mean on items that are on the agenda.
Those are not on the agenda.
Right.
Those are public comments.
Right. That's for, these are not on the agenda. Okay. Our first then would be Amar Singh.
Yeah, good evening, all of you. My name is Amar and I own a, a business here in city of Camarillo, located at 205 North Glen Drive, Camarillo. I don't have a kitchen in my business. I'm working on that one right now. I'm getting permits, but it's gonna take a lot of time getting all those approvals and permits from the city and of course from the county too, and it's, I'm gonna require a lot of money too. Since it's gonna take a lot of time, can I park a taco truck outside, outside of my business? That's what I'm asking for, until I get the permission to build a kitchen in my store. That's my question is. If I can park like a taco truck outside of my store? Because there's a lot of competition right now. A small stores haven't opened around my business and it's hurting me right now. I have a family.
You mean to sell tacos out of?
Right, right.
I think you're gonna have, this is not an agenda item, of course, so we can't do much with it, but I'd suggest that you talk with the, our community work, community development department and find out what you can and can't do.
I did actually talk to them and then they told me, just go to the meeting, one of the meeting, and then see what you can do.
That wasn't a good answer. The good answer's right here.
Go try him again.
Go see him.
Okay.
He, go see Joe. If, if no one's giving you that, that kind of answer, go to Joe.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kathy France.
My name is Kathy France and I live at the Lamplighter Mobile Home Park. At the May 12th, 2016 Review Board meeting, Don Davis, Assistant City Attorney, recommended to IPG, the owner of the Lamplighter Mobile Home Park, to have a third-party person help the residents interpret the long-term leases that IPG has been asking the residents of the park to sign. On May 26th, the residents of the park received a letter from IPG stating that they have been working on a solution in conjunction with the city of Camarillo to provide us with assistance in understanding the lease languages and terms. The letter further stated that IPG had set up a program with the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlement, VCDS, at their expense, and Giselle Getz was the one selected by the city as the mediator for any requested discussions. I, along with three other residents, took IPG up on their offer and had our appointment with Ms. Getz on June 29th. Ms. Getz answered many of our questions and concerns regarding the lease, but we also had a lot of questions for IPG. Ms. Getz made a list of eight, made a list of our eight or nine questions and was going to convey them to IPG. One of the questions that we asked was, "Why is the lease different in section 22M for myself than for Diane Hoffman when we are both current residents?" 22M reads for me, "Upon sale transfer of the manufactured home or assignment of the home site, after execution of this agreement, the then-current space rent may be increased to the then-current fair market rent or by 25% of the then-current rent, whichever is less." Diane's lease reads, "Upon sale transfer of the manufactured home or assignment of the home site, after execution of this agreement, the then-current rent for this space shall be immediately increased by up to 25%." Since we hadn't heard back from Ms. Getz as of Friday, August 19th regarding our questions, I called VCDS and I asked Cameron Spencer to have Ms. Getz call me so that we could find out what IPG's responses were to our questions. I received a call, a return call from Ms. Getz on Monday, August 22nd, at which time she told me that she had conveyed our questions to Amber after our meeting, but as of August 22nd, had not received any responsive, responses from her and had not had any further contact with her. That is almost two months with no response or communication from Amber, and that is unacceptable. Ms. Getz also conveyed to Amber that we asked for more face-to-face meetings to discuss our questions. Amber said that she would think about it and if she was interested, she would get back to Ms. Getz, but that she had already had a face-to-face meeting with us. To clarify that face-to-face meeting, we did have it, it occurred a couple of years ago, and since then, leases have changed. This program was put in place to help the residents interpret the lease. Unfortunately, with questions and concerns brought up by us, the residents, and not answered by IPG, we feel like we are back to square one. No communication. Why then sign a lease?
Have you spoken within our city, and this is not, of course, not an agenda item, so we can't discuss it too much, but have you spoken with our staff?
No.
Okay, I'd advise you to speak with our staff, maybe city attorney office, and see where they can go from there, if they can help you.
Do you have his card?
I'm sure he can get you a card.
You can call the city clerk and she can put you in touch with me.
Okay. And then maybe he can help you from there.
Is that Don Davis?
Uh, no, that's Mr. Perry here, Brian Perry. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Lince? I was, you know, you tried to turn that name into Lance. When you see it, it's Lance.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and the board members. My name's Marty Lince. I've lived in Camarillo for about 16, 17 years. I love the community and I'm here as a senior wanting a new senior center. I have a petition here that over 250 people signed from the senior center from all different activities, and I'd like to read the petition. "We, the undersigned, respectfully request that the Camarillo City Council and Pleasant Valley Park and Recreation Department work in conjunction with each other towards the goal of building a new senior center in which our community can take pride." There is a mechanism for this to happen, so it's called the joint power of authority. And my hope is that you would work in conjunction with the park and recreation and contribute, hopefully maybe, you know, build the senior center and, and that the park and recreation would maintain it. The park and recreation knows, they, they can't build a senior center themselves. Their budget is about $8 million. They just built one, a senior center in Agora, which costs $6 million. So they, they just can't possibly do that themselves. The city has already shown an interest in helping the seniors. In your website, you developed the city concert of aging, city concert of aging, and I'll read the first statement. It says, "Recognizing the seniors are a significant and vital segment of the city's population, we're 23%." And also under the budget summary in the website, it says, statements like this, "Provide safe and, uh, enriched environment where people can live, work, and play." I think that could include a new senior center. Why do we need a new senior center? It's overcrowded. The bingo is overcrowded, the bridge game is overcrowded, exercise Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays overcrowded, the art class is overcrowded, and, and, that made me nervous. And we, we don't have a computer room, the pool room's small, and if you want to look at state of art, is that you could look at the Thousand Oaks Senior Center. They, they have a fantastic one, they do, and so they told me they didn't, it couldn't have done it without the park and recreation and the city council working together. So I hope you can help us have an environment that the seniors can work and play and enjoy in a new senior center. And I have a petition which I would like to hand in. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. One of the things you need to know is we built the one they have now, city did.
Uh, it used to be a teen center?
It was teen center that turned into the, the senior center.
We sort of appreciate, but is, we just need, we'll all grow and...
No, I understand. The only thing is, we have talked to them about, we haven't heard anything from them of, of a proposal or anything.
Oh, I see.
But if you want to talk to the park and rec and see, then come back and talk to us.
Your Honor?
Bill?
I think, I think it would be appropriate for you to present that petition to them because there's, they're the ones who've got to start the ball rolling.
No, I will.
And we have, we have met, as the mayor said, we've met with them, we've indicated our interest in helping.
But they haven't come back.
It's been two and a half years since that happened.
That's a copy, so I got one for them.
Yeah, they haven't come back forward to talk to us since we said, just let us know what you need.
I do understand that they put some money in the budget this year for planning. Now where it is, I have no idea.
I'll talk to them.
Thank you.
There you go.
Your Honor?
Yes, it's been about two years since we met with them. A joint meeting of their board and our city council. And I think it's time that we request another meeting, another joint meeting, so that we can discuss this and other issues as well.
May I suggest, since they are working on their, their needs assessment, might be more timely to meet after they do the assessment?
How long do they expect that will take?
And let us know when they do that?
I think they're gonna be out on the street pretty soon, aren't they, Joe?
They're going out with an RFP within the next month or so, so it's probably gonna be a few more months before they even get started.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then are they there for, to finish it, or what?
I don't know their timeframe for completion.
Couple months, it's a survey-type, survey and focus group-type process.
So you'll keep us in touch?
Yeah, we'll keep you informed.
Thank you. Sounds like a long time. Any other questions, any other comments? So we're waiting for the park and rec to give us their needs so we can see what we can do to work with them.
Can I make just one comment? And I'm hoping that this won't drag out too long here, because, you know, has a tendency to drag out here.
Well, we made mention two years ago, we're ready to listen to what they, so we're ready to now. Dennis Furco. Where's Dennis? There he is.
Thank you, Mayor O'Mack and the rest of your council members. Dennis Furco with the Cabernet American Legion. This is a request to change your one ordinance on bingo, so that our post could host what they call remote bingo. And that's where there's different locations across the state that, so you have bigger payouts, you have more people involved. It is a fundraiser for our organization. If you recall, and several of you are members of our post, and I thank you, but we have lost our main income, which was our shoots out at the old dairy, the California, the hospital at the time, and then obviously the university now. We need your help to continue with supporting our veterans, our members of the community, the children of this community with our Boys State, Girls State programs and stuff like that. We need more income, and this is a way for us to do that. We have the hall set up, the ordinance that you already have in place, which is ordinance number 1051. The only thing that I seen that we would need to change on that would be where the limit, which is 5.48090, maximizing the prize amount to $500, because if we have, say, 20 locations throughout the state doing the same bingo at the same time, our prizes could definitely exceed that. I feel that it's a well-known fact that it's increasingly difficult for nonprofit organizations to raise funds. They need to continue their mission, and this would be a way for all nonprofits, not just the American Legion, but all nonprofits, to profit from this by just passing that particular ordinance. You do have the information in front of you, and if there's any other questions, obviously my number. Yes?
Yes, Kevin.
Yeah. Danny, is this an online bingo, or how does it, do you have any specifics about how it works?
It is in the file, but yes, there is. It's, um, the headquarters, I believe, they do the drawing in Sacramento, and it's streamlined out. We would have a TV screen, a big screen TV in the hall. It's all digitized, I mean, they got scanning bars as far as what tickets you have. You would actually have a card as a member that belongs to online bingo, remote calling. And so when you scan it in, you pay it, we have to have a separate account as far as the next morning, we would deposit all the monies earned into that account. And it's all very upfront in that, but it's, any of the organizations can do that.
And it is legal in the state?
It is legal. There is, uh, the California state law now authorizes, which is Constitution number, let's see, 19, and Penal Code 323 dot five.
Thank you.
This, excuse me, Dennis, does this mean you can play from your house? No, you have to be at the?
You have to be at the location.
Okay. Yes, Kevin.
Is this just for the, um, American Legion groups, or is it for other group, other nonprofit groups? And is it all nonprofit? There's no?
It's all nonprofit, and the proceeds are for charity purposes.
So it's?
And it is different groups. We got, there's Elks, you'll see in there that there's Elks Lodges, there's, um, a couple church groups even, as far as that goes.
I think.
Senior citizen organizations.
I think.
Um, Your Honor, I, and I don't remember, it may have been Mr. Fang, I know when this came up before, someone on staff has done research on this already.
Yeah.
So I don't know who it is.
Jan, a year ago, a year ago, I gave paperwork into, uh, to yourselves at that time, and then actually talking out at the Camarillo House one afternoon. Mayor Mike, which was not then, but Bill, was, and we'd talked about it, and they didn't quite understand it, but nobody gave me a call back.
Uh-oh. I know staff did research, so maybe you can all find it, and that gives us one head start on looking at it and, and bringing it.
I didn't give you a call back, but I saw you a long time ago and talked to you at length, so I did get in touch with you.
Yes, you did. As you can see, I got a large, a large support group here with me, so I do appreciate your time. Apologize for going over, and of course, questions help.
It's all part.
Any other thing there? And like I said, the, the blue folder that's in front of you, pretty much tells you a whole bunch of stuff right there on it. And it did, it would help all nonprofits in, in the city of Camarillo, because they can do it too.
So we can't do it tonight because it's not on the agenda, you know that?
Correct. No, no, I understand that.
We can't ask you to go to staff and start talking about it so we can, uh, we can then learn more about this and see where they're going to come from, from staff's coming from?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Little?
Maybe we should refer to a committee of the council and let staff interact with that.
I think staff needs to get the information before you have a council committee, staff should be.
Yeah, they need to, because I know they've done research on it, I don't remember which, we've got new staff around here, so I don't know who it was.
I, I, I believe in there that I did put, like, say, what the city of Monobello, uh, changed with their ordinance, and whereas, and whereas, and whereas that was. And, and like I say, that's where it does comply with the state, so there's, you're not infringing anything on there. And all it would do, the only thing, like I said, I can see changing Camarillo's existing bingo would be the amount, because, and we're, we're actually playing at our resident. In fact, you have to have, you have to have the address on the form when you're filling it out and everything else. So it has to be onsite, they set up some rules, which is in there. So I do thank you.
We can refer it to staff, and then he's the chief in that, that regard, has got the rules together legally.
Okay. I do thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our, our American Legion family thanks you.
Okay, next, public comment, Matt Lorimer.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Matt Lorimer. I'm the president of Lamp Lighter Mobile Home Park. Five years ago, the park was sold to IPG. Rents were $735, are now $1375. If you signed that lease, it would be about $2,500 a month. That lease is no good, we talked about it, you decided that you wanted to have an organization, Ventura Center Dispute Center, which says it has 25 years experience, we met Jill, June 29th, didn't hear several times, in fact, I've been to the city council twice before. You're aware that, that IPG is a rogue park, Bill Little has said that. Basically, they're not playing by the ball. They, this, they said that they have this contract, we say it's no good, they were asked, they've ignored it constantly. The owner of the park, Brian Fitter, should be brought among the city council, should be asked, why are we have the highest rents in Ventura County? It's unacceptable. This, this document far as signing a long-term lease is garbage. You take a look at it, other cities are having problems with it. It's no good, you need to call the owner here. Second thing I'd like to talk about, I attended the planning commission, we had a recycling place behind Smart and Final. You know something, 15 years this city didn't know, they didn't have a CUP, conditional user permit. It took the police department to go over there over 100 times at different stages because we had people doing inappropriate things, you had a stabbing there one time, we had several things going on over there, 15 years. Don't you think it's time to have a computer system that lets you know that a business isn't operating for 15 years? And by the way, the sheriff's department was thrown under the bus by the owner, saying that he's being targeted. You know, crime is up, 18 percent, assaults are up 33. We don't need the police department over there spinning several times over there, and you got to kind of wonder why the city council's not aware of that, and this business should have been shut down a long time ago. You know, it's time, maybe we need a new department in the city hall. How about accountability? How about having a new department accountability? Every time, for the last couple of years, we've had many problems with this city. It's time to look at these things. The idea that a business was operating for 15 years, you know, there's a couple schools that wouldn't go over there to bring their recyclables because it was so bad. You had homeless people sleeping over there, you had drug problems, you name it. And the idea that the city didn't know about it, you have a code enforcement, nobody was aware of it. There's no excuses for it, it's about time the city have a new department accountability. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I just have a question for our staff. Did we know, we knew about that all along, did we not, over the years?
If you didn't know about it, how'd they get on the?
Just wait.
I'm going to have to defer to somebody who knows.
Staff initiated the revocation of the conditional use permit for a variety of reasons. One was that they weren't compliant with the time extension that they were required to apply for.
So they had, they had one, this needed a time extension?
They hadn't applied for the extension through the procedures they were required to follow up on, and there was also a variety of code compliance violations, and staff initiated the revocation of the conditional use permit.
Reason I ask that question is, we knew, and they had a permit before, and they're looking for extension.
Correct, staff initiated that.
I just want to make sure the staff, that everyone knew, the staff knew about that, and they had.
They didn't know about it, how'd they put it on the agenda? That's what I'm saying, is that's the same you did.
But I want to make sure our staff tells them, we knew about it, it wasn't hidden, no, sorry.
Correct, thank you.
There's some other things about our, our crime rates too, that could get, I bring the chief up to correct that, but I'm not going to. But I'd like to have people addressing, give us the right facts, because that's absolutely wrong.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry to do that, but I just want to make sure that's corrected. Okay, we have no more public comments, now it's time for public hearings. Who's in charge of this first one?
Our department is. David Mo will be presenting this item, which is the general plan amendment and change of zone for the Camarillo Village Homes project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable City Council.
Wow, and public hearings already?
On January 22nd, 2014, City Council considered a request for an amendment of the general plan land use element for approximately 23 acres at the site located northeast corner of Lewis and Pleasant Valley Roads. The City Council referred the request back to staff for further study, and in an application for a general plan amendment, GPA 2014 dash three was filed by EJM Arizona Commerplex and Hawkeye Investments LLC on February 13th, 2014. On July 19th, 2016, the planning commission conducted a public hearing to consider the general plan amendments request, change of zone 321, and an amendment to Dawson Drive area concepts and design guidelines, and an environmental impact report for these items. The subject site has been used for active agricultural production since 1938. On September 11th, 1991, tentative tract 4698 was approved by the city council for the site to allow the creation of 15 parcels for residential development. While multiple time extensions were requested and approved, the final time extension expired in September of 1999. Accordingly, the site has remained undeveloped and is presently used for year-round production of irrigated row crops, which is a permitted use under the M1 zoning. The surrounding areas contain developed industrial areas to the east and west, vacant property currently underdeveloped for multifamily housing to the north, which is the former Imation site, and agricultural property in the county of Ventura to the south. The applicant is proposing to modify the current land use designation of approximately 20 acres from industrial to medium-density residential to accommodate a 285-unit for-sale townhome project, and approximately three acres from industrial to commercial mixed use for a 24-flat mixed-use project with approximately 12,000 square feet of commercial space. The request also includes a change of zone from light manufacturing to residential planned development, 15 units to the acre, and commercial mixed use, as well as an amendment to the Dawson Drive area concept and design guidelines. The Dawson Drive area concept and design guidelines were established in 2010 to set a vision for the area, to set and establish design guidelines to kind of help with the redevelopment of the area. The plan was amended in 2013 to allow for a development of the former Imation site with high-density multifamily housing to link the surrounding community and Old Town. The request is proposing to amend the guidelines further to allow for medium-density residential and commercial mixed-use development on the site currently planned for a business park development. Amendments to the plan include the redesignation of the site from industrial park slash university serving to residential slash commercial mixed-use village, to provide housing and commercial opportunities for the nearby university. To facilitate the proposed land use and zoning changes, tentative track, a tentative tract map has been filed to create two separate parcels. Approving these changes would allow for the consideration of the pending applications, residential planned development 196 for the 285 townhome project, and conditional use permit 321, which is the mixed-use project of 24 flats and 12,000 square feet of resident, or commercial tenant space. This slide, and then the following slide, provides an illustration of the potential development of the site should the subject GPA and change of zone be approved, as well as pending RPD and CUP applications. So here's their conceptual plan, and then here's the proposed elevations for the townhomes on top and the conditional use permit mixed-use development on the bottom. Environmental, environmental impact report 2014 dash two was prepared and circulated for public review and comment in accordance with the city and state guidelines. EIR indicates that the implementation of proper mitigation measures identified in the report, all but one, all but the loss of agricultural land would be adequately mitigated to levels below thresholds of significance. The loss of agricultural land would remain and is considered a significant and unavoidable impact. Accordingly, approval of a statement of overriding consideration will be required as part of the certification process of the EIR, which the statement will make findings that the project benefits outweigh the loss of prime ag land. The IR also analyzed alternatives that included the no project, the industrial development, and an alternative site. It was found that both the no project and industrial development options would delay but not reduce or eliminate the significance and unavoidable environmental impacts associated with the proposed project, while neither the industrial or alternative site options would meet the objectives of the proposed project. Staff received 55 emails prior to the planning commission meeting on July 19th stating opposition to the proposal. The emails focused on three main issues, traffic impacts, water demand, and loss of agriculture. The IR indicates that the traffic generated by the proposed project would be less than significant with implementation of the proposed mitigation measures. This was affirmed by the city traffic engineer in response to the planning commission's questions. Mr. Bill Galubix is also here in attendance and can answer any questions tonight. Mitigation in the ER also requires a developer to provide 100% of the water demand for the project. To ensure this is achieved, a water supply study must be submitted to the city for approval, documenting the water demand and the required offset, so the city can approve, make sure that it's consistent. The alternatives analyzed in the ER, especially the no project and industrial project alternatives, like I mentioned, would delay but not reduce or eliminate the significant or unavoidable environmental impact associated with loss of ag land. While the alternative site would not meet the project objectives, nor the aims of the existing Dawson Drive specific plan, which specifies the site for development that would support community goals and support the adjacent university. Therefore, a statement of overriding consideration has been prepared for the city council to consider, which indicates that the site has been planned for non-agricultural uses for decades as an urban industrial infill site, and was previously approved as an industrial subdivision in 1991. That the medium-density land use designation would be an appropriate transition from the higher-density residential projects to the north into the county agricultural use to the south and the university beyond. And that why the site could be developed with industrial uses under the current land use and zoning, the subject GPA and change of zone would allow for enhanced consistency with community goals, general plan, specific plan, by providing diverse housing opportunities and university-serving development, but, and still all within the city limits. Michael Brown, president of Cadence Environmental, prepared the environmental documents and the statement of overriding consideration, and he's here tonight to answer any questions on those documents. The proposed GPA and change of zone and specific plan amendment have been analyzed and contrasted with the community goals and the goals of the general plan, and have been shown in the staff report to provide consistency with both. Approval of this, these requests would allow for the consideration of the residential planned development and conditional use applications for the construction of the 285 for-sale townhomes, 24 rental flats, and the 12,000 square feet of commercial space. That would maintain consistency with the community goals of providing a variety of housing opportunities in a walkable, rideable environment in support of local retail and industrial uses while maintaining the community character and encouraging the preservation of the quality life that already exists in Camarillo. ER, EIR 2014 dash two, prepared for the subject site and companion applications, determine that approval of the general plan amendment, change of zone, and subsequent development of the site has potential to significantly impact the local environment without mitigation. Implementing, implementation of the required mitigation measures included in the ER and attached conditions of approval to any subsequent development would reduce all but one of the potential significant impacts to less than significant levels. The loss of agricultural land would remain, as I already have mentioned, and is considered to be significant and an unavoidable impact, and the, we have prepared a statement of overriding consideration for that as part of the certification process of the EIR. Approval of the proposed general plan amendment and change of zone will further implement the Dawson Plan specific plan, Dawson Drive specific plan, excuse me, and allow for the consideration of development that promotes smart growth techniques while further enhancing the relationships between, and linkages between Old Town, the Metrolink Station, and the university. At the July 19th Planning Commission public hearing, seven members spoke in opposition of the proposal, and three non-verbal cards were received in opposition. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the planning commission concurred with the requests and adopted resolutions recommending approval of EIR 2014 dash two, GPA 2014 dash three, change of zone 321, and an amendment to the Dawson Drive area concept and design If, after tonight's public hearing, the city council agrees with the requests, the subject actions- actions are as follows. For the EIR, a suggested action is a motion to adopt the resolution approving the statement of overriding considerations and certifying the environmental impact report number 2014-2. For the Dawson Drive concept and design guidelines, suggested action is a motion to adopt the resolution approving an amendment to the Dawson Drive area concept and design guidelines. For the GPA 2014-3, suggestion -- the suggested action is a motion to adopt the resolution approving general plan amendment GPA 2014-3 to change the land use element designation from industrial to approximately 3 acres of commercial mixed-use and 20 acres of medium-density residential. For the change of zone 321, suggested action is to request for reading of the title and a motion to adopt a resolution approving change of zone 321 to change the zoning designation from N1, M1 light industrial to approximately 3 acres of CMU or commercial mixed-use and approximately 20 acres of RPD 15 residential plan development, 15 units to the acre maximum. This concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Little?
All the proposed housing units are condominiums, or are there rental apartments?
There's actually two projects there. The parcel one will be the 285-for-sale townhomes, and then on the southwest corner will be the mixed-use project, and that'll have rental flats.
How many of those?
Twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have just a couple. I'm sorry, you have a question?
Kevin has.
Go ahead. Raise it up, Kevin.
I do, I try. Could I talk a little bit about the traffic impact on the cities, if you will? I understand that we can mitigate some of the traffic issues within the city, but what about traffic issues outside of the city vis-à-vis if they go on -- out to the 101, and obviously we can't widen the 101, but was that taken into consideration, any of the impacts on the area outside of the city that could be impacted by this?
The traffic study did estimate the amount of peak hour traffic that would be generated by this project and use the 101 freeway. It's approximately 70 trips total on and off the freeway during one of the peak hours, whether it be the morning peak hour, excuse me, or the afternoon peak hour. Those volumes were not being added to critical movements at the interchanges, so the interchanges themselves with the city streets penciled out at Level C or better. As far as the mainline capacity to take additional traffic, again, that's what Caltrans is dealing with on what would be the improvements needed to increase mainline capacity.
Bill, would they be mostly going out Pleasant Valley to get to the 101? Would that be the preferable route if they were to do that?
Now, we -- and traffic study said we would take the most direct route. They'd go up Lewis Road, use the ramps at Daley and at Ventura, or they'd use the split interchange to go south, which would be, well, Village at the Park Pettit, or the Flynn Road half interchange.
Or if it weren't that busy, go down to Las Poses and catch it going north. That's another alternative.
Pleasant Valley and --
And Lu -- and Pleasant Valley and Las Poses, I'm sorry, and Las Poses, and catch the freeway there.
It sent very few trips over to that particular access point. During peak hour, it'd be like 15 trips were projected to go that way because it'd be more convenient to go up Lewis Road.
Okay, so 15 go that way, okay. I have one question, any other questions? I'm Charlie Chan. Go ahead.
This isn't traffic, so you're off the hook, Bill. This isn't traffic, so you're off the hook, Bill. This is for David. You keep talking about community goals, and I guess I'm going to have to ask you which community goal, because I would think that as the zoning currently stands, that also would meet a community goal.
So the community goals are listed in the staff report, big pages, I'll go back past that.
But couldn't you interpret it to mean industrial and building and --
Yeah.
Jobs would meet community goals as well, so you're making it sound like only building residential meets community goals. We have lots of different goals.
We would assume that the existing land use does meet the existing community goals, but we also analyzed this in light of what's proposed with residential and compared that with the community goals and how it would fit within that context, and it also can achieve compliance with those.
So both, both do. It's not one or the other. They both meet community.
Yes, it's consistent with the existing land use of industrial now, and upon analysis, we determined that it could also be consistent with the community goals as they relate to residential use at the site.
And that's very important because it made it sound like the other didn't, but this would, so.
No, that's correct. Thank you.
Can you also remind me our RINAs numbers? Don't we have housing that takes us out through our current housing element?
Yes.
Yes.
Does that include the university when you talk about housing numbers?
We don't -- no, we didn't analyze it for.
No, the reason I say that is because it's going to grow to 15,000 eventually.
Except, Mr. Mayor, let's not confuse the RINAs issue with university housing. They're two separate issues.
There's two separate, but affiliated, because one affects us on housing big time.
Well, our RINAS numbers are our RINAS numbers, and so we are -- we don't need those -- this in order to meet our RINAS numbers out through our current housing element.
Not for the moderate housing that would be provided.
The other one has to do with -- we talk a lot about meeting the needs of the university. Did anyone look at the fact that providing jobs and providing an R&amp;D park would benefit the university? The last -- and I haven't talked with the new president, so I can't speak to current, but one of the problems they were having was not having room on campus for the incubator projects and for creating the jobs and really using your university to drive an economy. And that was some of what they were looking over in that area, was to use the industrial space to have those small incubator projects and create jobs.
That wasn't really the focus of our analysis because we were basing the analysis on the general plan referral for the residential project and the mixed-use project.
But isn't that an alternative use?
Well, it's been zoned industrial since the 90s, and it hasn't been.
Twenty-five years.
I guess why I'm saying is it needs to be brought up, because when we're sitting here looking at options and choices, you need to have both options on the table and not just one, and I think that's really important. Can you also remind me what the -- you said the planning commission approved this. Can you tell us what the vote was?
Yes, I anticipated that question.
Because it wasn't unanimous, and it only passed on an abstention.
So we had one planning commissioner that was present, so we only had a quorum of four. And the motion on the general plan amendment was passed at a three-to-one-to-one, so there was three in favor, one abstained, and one was absent.
One abstained?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it was no objections, but just abstained? Okay.
And then on the other two?
Excuse me, that was the environmental document. The general plan amendment was a vote of two in favor, one opposed, one abstained, and one absent.
So it passed because the abstention was counted as a yes vote?
No.
No, it was counted as nothing.
Yeah, nothing.
I thought our abstentions counted as yes.
No, no.
They do for city council, but for the planning commission, we use Robert's Rules of Order, and so it doesn't count at all.
So how did it pass if it was two-to-one? To one?
Because that's a simple majority.
Two-to-one.
Two-to-one and one gone.
I didn't hear that.
Isn't that a tie?
No, it's not.
If it doesn't count as a yes?
It doesn't count as a no either, so it's two-to-one.
Two-to-one.
So that was the recommendation.
So it passed two planning commissioners -- okay, let me rephrase this. Only two planning commissioners voted to approve it, and that's a very important thing to know.
Important too is one was absent, so you don't know.
One was absent, one abstained, and two said yes, so it wasn't a vast majority. Very important. And the other one I have is having to do with the Dawson Drive area concepts and design guidelines, and I know a lot of us, there are some of us that were here when we developed that, but when we originally developed it, how much has it changed since then, since the initial plan was adopted?
It's my understanding that a portion of it had changed for the adjacent residential project to the north for the high-density residential, and that's pretty much the only change that's been implemented since its conception.
Okay, that's all I -- oh, one more on water. So they don't fall under our credit program then, right?
Correct. They have to provide 100% of an offset to make up the water demand.
Okay, and there's no requirement then that that be determined before all of this takes place? It can be done after the fact?
It is a mitigation measure that it would be done after the fact, prior to a will-serv letter.
Okay, and the restrictions in place having from Fox Canyon doesn't change our rules? It still would happen at the will-serv level time, meeting their requirements?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't keep us from changing zoning or adding housing to the mix? Okay. Okay, that's my questions for now. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more. Who actually owns the property?
It's owned in part by EJM, Arizona, I guess Arizona, and then also Hawkeye.
So they both have title to it?
Yes.
Just EJM, Arizona Commerce.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was confusing that question with who the applicants are. So EJM is the underlying property owner, but that property -- or the application on the property is EJM in partnership with Hawkeye.
But the actual owner of title is just EJM?
Yes.
The developer doesn't have title?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, you had your hand up.
I've got some comments, but.
You have hand up, no?
No, I don't have questions.
Okay, I've got it. Oh, okay, Kevin, now get it up there so I see it.
Thank you. Feel like I'm on the North Florida here sometimes. Can I just -- I want to get back to the university now. This is not housing built for the university, and I know this might not be appropriate question at this time. Tell me if it is or if it isn't. But how do we preclude this from not becoming a rental situation for student housing? Is there any way that we can do that? Was that discussed?
No, there really is no legal way to preclude it from being purchased and used as rental units by private property owners, and it's not specifically being planned by the city staff to support the university, but obviously because of its proximity to the university, it could facilitate housing for people that use or work or attend the university.
Is that it? There's no way that we can put that in a CCNR or anything of that nature?
No, fair housing laws would not allow us to do that.
Just to do that. Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. I have one question. Bill, you have no questions?
No.
I have one question. On the map, I didn't see it, but I thought we were going to put a shuttle stop there by the commercial area, so the bus from the -- the shuttle from the college would stop there and go forward.
That's really more related to the residential plan development permit, and that is part of the project, and if this gets approved, we'll be analyzing a tentative tract map in a public hearing subsequent to this, and there's also conditions of approval on that map require the bus turnout.
I do, I do have one question.
Okay, Kevin, or Bill?
How many square feet of commercial is planned?
12,000, 12,000 square feet is planned in the mixed-use.
Just 12,000.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding, this is a village-type thing where they have, you know, maybe a convenience store and a cafe and stuff like that to service the community.
Yes, that's correct, and with the residential on top.
Right, okay.
Can I have another one?
Go ahead.
Figure back on what you brought up. If you had this as an industrial, an R&amp;D park, you could still have your bus drop-off.
Yes.
You could still have your park, your merandere sidewalks, you could still have all the amenities that they are talking about as enhancing the community. Those could exist with an R&amp;D park as well, right?
Yes.
Other than adding homes.
Yes.
If anybody made the proposal.
That's right, and.
Nobody's made it.
Well, it's because this developer from out of town went in, convinced the people to sell the project to him, so he could make them lots of money, and you always make more money on residential than you do on the other. But all of these things could occur if that project came forward, so it's not unique to having a residential area there, that's my question, such as the bus turnout.
A bus turnout, no, and we did want to ensure that there is pedestrian circulation that's dedicated and safe, and so that could also be accommodated with the industrial development.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, now we have -- did the property owner want to say anything?
Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, I better open the public hearing, yep. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Did the property owner want to say anything?
All right, yeah, good evening. My name is Jerry Marcel. I'm the managing member of Camaro Village Homes, and I'd like to give you the main environmental reasons why the staff and planning commission approved the project and why it meets the community goals as well. The first thing we heard at the last hearing was water, and this project uses less water than the existing use. I almost have to repeat that because a lot of people were confused at the last meeting, so it actually helps the water situation. Also helps the situation because this project will do improvements to the city's irrigation system and public parks and schools and such, and we are also approved for 80% of the usage now by the GMA when the drought is over, so it's going to be a double whammy for the city. City will get to keep the improvements in perpetuity that we give them, and we'll have that 80% of the water. So, but in any case, whether we double the amount of water that we're using, we're using less than the existing use, and so -- and there are many industrial uses which would use more. Also, traffic and traffic safety. At the last meeting, planning commission meeting, staff pointed out that this project produces less peak hour traffic than most industrial uses. I think that's very important because that's when it counts. Also, this project is burdened with 3.4 acres of public roads, which will serve the Fairfield Project. They don't have a signalized access to get out onto Lewis, so this will help them. Is our time up?
No, keep going.
Okay, so this -- they'll help that project. Also, the roads allow both projects to reach the retail element without going on to Lewis or Pleasant Valley Road, and we have to build those roads at our cost. We have to maintain them in perpetuity at our cost, not a city cost, but -- and they are public roads. This project also is installing street medians. Am I speaking too loud?
No, I just think you said something that's wrong, but that's okay. Go ahead.
The project has installed street medians on Pleasant Valley, also on Lewis, which will help traffic safety. The aesthetics of the project. The project is required to have a 40-foot setback along Lewis. The whole residential part of that street, which takes up about 75%, is 50 minimum to 86 maximum, averaging over 70 feet setback. An industrial use would certainly go to the 40-foot minimums. The project also has to landscape all those medians on both Pleasant Valley and Lewis, so that helps the aesthetics. The project has to underground the power poles on Lewis. That's a very expensive thing and make the project look better as well. The residential and retail architecture looks better than an industrial project, and this being the southern entry to the city, I think that's important. We are also -- we're requested by the city to put in a "Welcome to Camarillo" sign on the corner, which we will, and there'll be a nice little parquet in the corner where you enter the city. Recreationally, the project provides a Class 1 jogging trail all the way from the Fairfield Project to the north to the edge of the city to the south, and that. that will meander, and that's a jogging and biking trail that meanders in that 40-foot area setback. There are two very large recreation areas within the project, which have pools, spas, fitness centers, recreation rooms, picnic areas, and meeting rooms, and probably more importantly, the project is giving the city $2,840,000 to add or improve the existing public parks within the city. And probably the biggest asset that this project provides the citizens of the city will be the amount of money that it creates for the public treasury. Currently, the property is assessed at about $3 million. This project, when you combine the increase in property tax assessment and the retail sales, produces about 85 times more than the current project. All that money can be used for schools, parks, et cetera, whatever the city deems will help the rest of the city. And finally, I heard the mention of Channel Islands University. This is the last undeveloped parcel, the closest, I should say, last undeveloped parcel that can serve the university. It serves in that it has the 24 flats, which are large two-bedroom, two-bath flats, housing approximately four students per flat, so almost 100 students. It has retail element, and Jan pointed out about jobs, I didn't even think of that, that will provide jobs for the students. The retail element also provides services not just for the university, but it's be providing services for the Fairfield project, this project, and the light industrial projects, which is very needed, as you probably know, there's none out there. We're here to answer any questions you got. I don't know if Brandon has anything else.
No, we're just here to answer questions, and my name is Brandon Mann, so I'm with Hawkeye Investments, so part of the applicant. Didn't get to say that before.
Questions?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, questions?
I have a question.
Kevin?
Yeah, can I talk a little bit about the retail part of this, and what, I know it might be a little bit premature, but any specifics on that, is what type of retail you're talking? Are they restaurants? Are they convenience? Are they for the residents out there?
We think it'll be mostly geared to the university, so, you know, the typical, the Starbucks for the kids to get their coffee and do their homework, and we've set up a parquet, a food court outside. That's also is where the jogging and bike trail ends, so those people can get their food. The services would probably be tutoring academy. I'm not sure, but there's a lot of different services that would service a university. Restaurant might be one of them, but you're right, we, it's a little bit premature. We don't have anybody committed to a lease. We wouldn't do that before getting an approval.
This will be similar to the commercial part that's in Village at the Park, where you have residences above and those different kinds of convenience things below, correct?
I'm not familiar with that one. Maybe you can answer that, Brandon.
Did you take a look at that?
Yes.
No, I don't know that project in an output. Maybe Mr. Vaca.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, it'd be similar.
That's what I thought. Any other questions, Kevin?
I guess I'm a little bit confused, and maybe you can educate me a little bit here. My understanding is that this is not for university students per se, but I'm hearing that a large component of this is specifically going to be university student housing, if you will, or at least opportunities there, which is, I'm not making a determination on that, but if that's the case, shouldn't it be pitched that way?
It probably will. I mean, it's up to the owner of that parcel, but that's the primary idea. It's not a condition. It doesn't have to be rented to students, but that's the thought.
Okay. If you've ever been to any, away to college at all, you'll know that the closest, especially those rentals that are in those 24, are going to be full of college students. And secondly, a lot of those rentals people buy are going to be used for, not rentals they'll buy, the people, the property they'll buy will be rented out, too, because that's why they did it, because college is so close by, and...
Yeah, that may happen, and you may get professors even buying to live, so, yeah.
Other questions?
I've got a question.
Bill?
Since the majority of this project will be condominium, by far, as I understand it, wouldn't it make more sense to think that we'll have people who are first-time homeowners buying those properties? I mean, we're going to have, you said, I think, 24 apartments versus 200 and some odd condominiums. It would seem to me that the proportion is going to go in the, because there is a demand for housing in the city, as there is in the county, as there is in Southern California, and people are looking for places to live, and it seems to me this is one of those projects that could fill that need to the extent it can.
Yes, that's, I expect there'll be a lot of first-time buyers. We did look at the market and noticed that there's a deficiency of three-bedroom units. Most of the townhomes are built as two-bedrooms, even most of the flat condos are built as two-bedrooms, and that's because when you go from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom, the amount of required common open space goes from 500 square feet for a two-bedroom to 1,500 for a three, and over 70% of our units are three, so there is a lot of common open area.
Other questions? Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now I have cards for those who wish to speak on this item. First is Penny Teague.
Good evening. Most of my points have been covered, but there are a couple of things I wanted to bring up. So, in the last couple of days, I decided I would see if I could talk to some more people and see how they felt about the project, and my responses were all very positive. Couple of them were really interesting. One member of the Board of Realtors was like, "Well, of course we need it." That was it, that was all she had to say. She was like, "We need more housing. There isn't enough housing to go around," kind of addresses what Mr. Little said, is that it's not going to be just for university students, but there will be, probably based on price point, there probably will be a lot of first-time buyers, first-time buyers with parents helping them, because when I spoke to people, there were a lot of people who had kids that were going to be getting jobs, they're just out of school, or they've been living at home because they can't afford to live anyplace else right now, and they would very much like more housing that they could assist their families to get into. And then I spoke to a new employee over at All Things T, which was kind of interesting, and which is just right over here, and it ended up that she was a student at the university, and she lives over on Paseo Camarillo. She doesn't have a car, and she was very excited about the project with the possibility that she and her roommates could stay there, and she would actually be able to ride a bike to school, and she wouldn't have to rely on somebody to get her to her classes. So those are really the main topics that I just wanted to bring up. If you would like to see the petitions, just let me know. It's about, I don't know, the last few days, I think I got about 47 people, but as I say, a lot of them are people who want to help their families get started and established.
Penny, you can leave those petitions with Jeffrey for the council to look at. Additionally, you missed the shuttle there. They don't have to have a car, they can ride the shuttle, catch our old-town shuttle, and go all over the place. Not have a car.
They can, but from Paseo Camarillo to catch the shuttle to go to school is a bit of a hassle.
Well, I meant, I'm talking about if they moved out, yes, there you go.
Yes, they definitely could.
Okay.
They could even ride to the beach.
Mm-hmm. Other comments, questions? Next would be Martin Titlebaum.
Good evening, Martin Titlebaum. On my speaker card, I referenced Agenda Item A. My comments pertain to both A and B, and I am a developer. I've built well over 125 industrial buildings in the Ventura, West Ventura County, since the early 80s. I own these six buildings on Constitution, which constitutes the easterly property line of the subject parcel, and I have two concerns, and two concerns only, about both Agenda Item A and B. Number one, I want to be certain that along our common property line, there is some kind of defensive barrier, preferably an eight-foot-high masonry block wall that would separate my six buildings on Constitution from this development, and I own all but one building on the side of the street that borders the subject parcel. Secondly, and of much more concern, is will there be a traffic signal installed on Constitution? When Village at the Park was built, not, was being considered not in a public setting, I spoke to Bob Burrow articulating my concern about the traffic, and he assured me at the time that the signals that were being installed for Village at the Park would be synced with Pleasant Valley, and I think his words were, "We're going to platoon the cars up." I don't know if you've been on Pleasant Valley in the late afternoon and trying to get off Constitution. It's a fairly perilous situation. There are cars backed up from the intersection of Pleasant Valley, blocking the view to the west, so if you're making a left turn, as I do every night to go home to Thousand Oaks, it's very, it can be very dangerous. And likewise, turning right, the traffic stacks up on Constitution many afternoons because the traffic is backed up from Pleasant Valley, and the cars can't get out. So, I have not seen the traffic study. I do question the traffic counts. I heard 70 trips from 280 units with three bedrooms with students in them, and I have not seen the mitigation measures, but I want to be sure that when this project goes forward, a traffic signal is installed at Constitution, or it's going to become an untenable situation, and I have all multi-tenant buildings along Constitution with small businesses who support the community coming in and out all day long, and it's important to me with the investment I made on the street that my tenants can get in and out, and I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Any questions? I have one for staff because of what you brought up, is that will there be a right-turn lane that goes from Constitution down to the Lewis Road? Because you've got a new project like that, you're going to need more turn lanes. That's for you, Joe.
I don't know the answer to that. I would actually ask Bill to help out with that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we currently have a right-turn lane as you approach Lewis. Essentially, that'll be lengthened to the east, and then it would serve the main driveway.
For Constitution.
Entering this project. It would not serve Constitution.
So you'd have to go another block or so to get to Constitution turn, if you wanted to add to that turn lane?
There'd be probably another 400 feet to be constructed to get to Constitution, and then if you wanted to add, you know, a right-turn lane into Constitution, it'd have to take a national 200, 300 feet.
Okay.
But none is planned at this point.
That's something to be looked at.
The left turn in and out is...
Left turn is impossible even now, and with industrial coming in there, if industrial came, it'd be more impossible. So doing a left-turn lane going toward the freeway would be difficult.
Well, it could still be signaledized in either event.
Is that planned?
Is there any plans for that?
Is there a plan for a signal at Constitution?
Not at this time. That's not been considered.
No.
And my guess is, I'll ask, normally you tell us, "I think that those are too close together," but I've been around Tom Fox for too long.
Too close.
Yeah, I'll jump in because you're referring to probably past conversations and studies we've done in general for traffic signals, and there's a variety of criteria we look at, the traffic volume, traffic delays, and so on, proximity to other signals, and I guess you generally fall into one of three categories. Clearly, and the term that's generally used in the industry is warranted. There's locations where clearly a signal is warranted, and then one's installed. There's locations where it's borderline, and generally we then look at other criteria, sight distance, things like that, and more times than not, we'll probably install the signal even when it's borderline. And then there's a category where it just doesn't come close to meeting any of the criteria, and because of the low traffic volume that comes from Constitution, it doesn't come close to meeting any of the criteria.
Question, Tom, is, at the end of Constitution, where it leads into the old unit area over there, did we, is there a drive that can go out of there into that area?
No, it's a...
I think the question is, within the Constitution cul-de-sac, is there any ability to
Yes.
fit in and access between buildings to connect Constitution to other property that they could get access
Yes.
other than out on the Pleasant Valley Road. It would require working with a private property owner to reconfigure their site to be able to make room for that. There's not any open space or easement that's available now to do that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jameson. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could I make a comment for the gentleman that just spoke about the setback between our property and his?
Sure.
Your Honor, what might be best is that the other speakers speak, and then if you want to give the applicant an opportunity at the end to respond.
Jameson Lingle?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be really brief. I think we all want smart growth, and my concern with this project right now is just that there's too much uncertainty with our water future and our traffic and transportation future at the state level. So I would like you to vote no on this, and wait till we have a better idea of what our future is going to look like with regards to water and transportation.
Hang on one second, don't leave. Bill?
Anytime you start betting this city's future on what California, the state of California's going to do, you're in for a lot of trouble.
Sure, but I think part of it is the Measure A tax, which might do some work on the freeway, which will help transportation in the city theoretically, and then also...
I think you mentioned water for a second.
Yes.
I think they indicated through their studies, and I guess our staff agrees with them, that not only are they using less water, but they're also going to be adding other waters to other areas.
Sure, and I certainly appreciate that.
So I think, hang on, I think that in itself shows that we're gaining water.
You know, I certainly appreciate that, but, you know, if we run out of water, we can stop watering the fields, we can't stop watering the people. So, yeah, that'd be my response.
That's, okay. Any other questions? Nobody? Okay, last but not least, and it's not because I put you on last, hold it, Mr. Lorimer, it just ended up on the, that's where it ended up.
Turned it in last.
It's okay, Mike, I'll take your word for it. Fuzzy math is the word of the day. Now, he said 70 trips. Channel Islands University has 1,600 students that live there, 6,200 attend. He said only 70 trips apply. This is a 23-acre site. Now, it says here in black and white, it says, "Commercial approximately 20 acres to resident development use." Does that mean only one person is going to buy each unit? Because if you figure that out, at 15 people, that's 300 people. If you figure it out, basically, two people per unit, that's 600 people. So the point is here, how did he get 70 trips? The university already has 1,600 people who live on-site. The rest, when I talk to those people, a good majority of them are driving there. Some are carpooling, I agree, but the math doesn't make sense here. So are we saying that every unit here is going to be sold to one person? Because that's not reality. It says here clearly, 15 dwelling units per acre, that's 15 units. Most people who buy homes, there's two people, two incomes. How much are the prices of these units? Are they half a million dollars? I know they're not going to be 250 or 350, probably half a million dollars. So it doesn't make sense here. If you have 15 units per acre, right, and you're using 20 acres here, the numbers don't add up. How did he get 70 trips? The point is, it doesn't make sense. The math doesn't add up. There's going to be more trips than that. You know, the people complain because the freeway's backed up, and there's issues, but this math doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense at all, unless you're going to throw some different figures in there, but if you... But if you still look at how many people are going to buy into this unit, it doesn't make sense. The math is not correct. Okay? That's a big concern because traffic, if you, if you work all day long, you know people are coming down that grade. We don't, you, by the way, Kevin said, "We think there's going to be 100 people living there." How many people are going to be living there? We don't know. This is all statistics. You throw statistics around, it's just like crime. You say crime, if you take all the years of crime, it's lower, but one year goes higher, so therefore you should look at other years. You can play with the math, that's called fuzzy math, and that's what it is. The idea is only be 70 trips? Come on. Let's be real. You got, if you count the units, there's no way there's going to be 70 trips. No way. Maybe you can explain that to us. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Now, back with a gentleman that'd like to speak to us again.
I'd like, I think that there ought to be an answer to...
I'm going to ask him right now.
Mr. Lorimer.
Uh huh. I think he's got it. The gentleman represents the same. You heard some of the questions, some of the answers, some of the things that were said. Can you talk to those issues?
Okay, yeah. I'd like to first discuss the setbacks between our property and the neighboring industrial property or light industrial. We had designed a five-foot planting area up against a decorative masonry wall, and we built the wall to the required height. But then they wanted, the case planner, Steve, wanted us to increase that to eight feet so that we can get larger landscaping, and we agreed because we don't want to look at their industrial park. Behind that, eight feet, is another 26-foot road that goes the entire length of the property. Behind that is a 20-foot landscape area to the units. You add that up, it's 54-foot setback the entire way, and a lot of landscaping, a lot of decorative masonry wall.
You also heard something from Mr. Lorimer about the 70, 70 traffic units a day?
I think that might be for Bill because I'm not a traffic guy, but I know that, I think Bill said it was peak hour traffic getting to the freeway and not the total number of trips. Total number of trips per day would probably be 1,000 or more than that, but whatever, it's going to be many. I have no idea. But, so I could understand why he was concerned about the math, but we're talking about peak.
That's what I heard, peak. Bill, could you come up and say something about the traffic?
I just have questions for him before you do.
He'll come back. I'll bring him back. Let's deal with this one first.
During the peak hour in the morning, it's projected that the project would generate 314 trips. About 50 of those would be coming, would be entering the freeway system. And then we got about 20 coming off the freeway during the morning peak hour. That's the 70 that I was speaking of. So obviously, we're going to have a couple hundred other trips using Pleasant Valley, Lewis Road, the other major streets serving the site.
You were talking about what was affecting the freeway. I remember that. That was a 70.
Just a 70 on the freeway.
Exactly.
You might explain what peak hours are for everybody. Peak hours?
Peak hour, morning commute, probably like 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. And then in the evening, around 5:00 to 6:00 for the longer trips on the freeway.
About an hour in the morning, hour at night.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not at the bill.
Thanks, Bill. I think Jan has a question for you.
Yeah, a few of those that came up. Do you have any idea what the estimated sales price of these units? What are you, just rough ballpark looking at?
He was actually pretty accurate. The ballpark would be 500,000. And I don't know if this makes the gentleman feel any better, but most industrial uses, the peak hour, which is what counts, traffic...
Much more.
Is much more.
Much more.
And that's what it's zoned for. It's not zoned for row crops.
No.
May I ask one more? You mentioned in, in your presentation that you had a lot of recreational space within it. Does each project have its own, so there's something for the apartments and then something for the townhomes? Do they all share it, or how does that work?
Well, the apartments have their own little parquet with picnic tables, et cetera. I don't know what they're going to, what, I'm not a commercial guy, I'm not going to develop that. And you wanted to know, what about the townhome side?
So the townhomes have their own private pool or whatever, so it's not open to the public, and it's not open to the apartments.
Not open to the public.
And not to the apartments. So they each have their own separate...
It depends on what gets worked out between the two parcels. It might be the same ownership. I can't guarantee it, but probably, I mean, I've done that myself. I'm a developer, and I've had two different projects next to each other which share common amenities.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Now it's time to find out, we have comments or questions of staff?
Close the public hearing.
Yeah. Question to staff. I keep forgetting, I want to put it back in there. Close the public hearing this time.
Close the public hearing.
Now, comments. Questions, staff, anything?
I have a question to staff. Can I ask that?
Kevin?
I don't know if this is premature or not, but if comfortable answering this. If this does go downstream and if something other than what it's zoned for tonight, will there be an affordable component to this? Will it have to follow that guideline?
Yes, so we've been analyzing RPD as part of the overall application, and it does include a request for a concession to not provide RV parking. So the project would be required to provide 10% of the units for affordable income buyers at the moderate level.
And in lieu of not providing the RV parking, is that...
Correct.
Okay. Bill, you have a question?
And that, we're talking about are the condominium units, not the apartments.
It'd be the whole project, all the units.
But if 10%?
For the townhomes, all the townhome units.
So it will be, the large number will be to the townhomes rather than the apartments because there are only 24 apartments, I believe.
Right.
So, so then we would get into a, probably a second mortgage for the city, helping...
What we would have is an affordability covenant for 29 units out of the 285 townhomes.
Okay. So these people would, these people would end up owning property, not just renting?
Correct.
I have one more question for staff if I could. This had to do with the water, and the comment made that they will get back 80% once the GMA is done. Is that, is that true?
Well, the GMA voted a couple of years ago in December, if I remember right, excuse me, was, and this was before, well, they voted that the, the well could transfer to the city, if I remember right, isn't that? And then they decided with emergency ordinance E that there were no water transfers. So this doesn't apply until emergency ordinance E is rescinded, if it's rescinded. I mean, you know, we changed our, our water rules based on what happened in Northern California, but that has not changed the Fox Canyon depth of water.
And, and don't...
Well, it has. It keeps getting lower.
And you don't have, Fox Canyon doesn't have their groundwater management plan done yet either, right? That's still in the works?
Yeah, it's called something else, but, yeah.
Yeah, if I could...
Sustainability.
Sustainability. Yeah, we don't have the other one, but we're not going to do the other one anymore either.
So, so when they make the comment that they're going to get the 80% back, that's kind of an unknown.
They might.
They might, or they might not.
Yeah. Right now, the way the discussions are proceeding, it's unlikely that we would get that. The board approved it and then suspended it, as Councilmember Craven pointed out, with ordinance E. The early discussions on the preparation of their groundwater sustainability plan is they will probably end up wiping out the transfers that were approved and replacing it with a new program. Now, whether they allow any credit for that or not remains to be seen, but again, the early indication is, from the conversations at least with staff, is that there probably won't be anything that was granted as recently as when the ordinance went into effect that would be honored.
So then, in order to meet their water requirements, what are they going to do?
So they'll, they'll fall in the same category as any other project that would be coming forward now that has not been grandfathered into the water credit program, but they would have to be using the water offset program, the water demand offset as a permanent program. And that is that they would have to go out and identify permanent water reductions within our water service area to offset their demand.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? I have just one. On recycle water, once we get all that recycled water into that farmland, that's between Lewis and Pleasant Valley, will we have some to run along, run across so that it hits the landscaping all through that area, the bike path, the little parks, all that stuff? Can we have blue lines put in as part of the requirements?
At this point, the infrastructure that we've planned will not extend that far west. It will extend basically to the west end of the Village at the Park property. However, that's a strategy that this project could certainly, it would not be something we would impose on them, but if it's a strategy they wanted to consider to connect up to our recycled water system and at least use that as part of their offset so that they're not having as much potable water demand, that is a strategy that we can certainly, we'd certainly be willing to discuss with them, but they would have to want to consider proceeding with that.
So taking a, taking a line under the roadway to that side and watering all their public areas would be an option, too, if they wanted?
That's certainly an option. It may not be a cost-effective option for them, but it's certainly one that if they wanted to consider it, we could look into it.
Can I follow up on that? But aren't we also looking at using that as an offset for some of the other projects that the city has in play and so forth? So we've got to be careful we don't double-dip and do the same project.
I think we're not, we're looking at farmland for that pipeline. I'm talking about the pipeline.
But we're, we're talking about the city having to get offsets in order to do the conference center, the city having to get offsets in, because we have the same criteria as everybody else, right?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Good, good question. Let me, let me clarify. There is, there is a difference. So we do have at our wastewater treatment plant, 4 million gallons a day of recycled water that we're producing. And we ultimately want to deliver it to whatever customers are out there that can take it. And, and any customer that can takes it is a benefit because we need to deliver it to customers rather than discharge into the creek and to have them participate in our program. Now, as far as creating a credit that we would be able to apply to our own projects, we're doing things like replacing grass in our medians, and we've done some other median work and other types of conversions from higher water use to lower water use scenarios. It's that city project water savings that we would use as the credit to apply.
So we're now no longer looking at using our recycled water program to help offset our projects?
To a degree, to some degree, because we're going to be using, we could be using recycled water, for example, in our medians in some areas where we would take the credit for that in replacing potable water. So it would be anywhere that we would use it as a city water source for a city facility.
So the, I'm sorry, I'm a little off-subject here, but it's important to me. The water that goes to the farmers who gets credit for that offset?
There, there really isn't a credit that we're applying. That was just a strategy to reduce our water demand.
As I recall, things outside the city, like farmland, can't be used as credit. Is that correct? Is that what you told us once?
We were selling them water.
Well, well, again, and, and, you know, clearly what you're hitting on is the world of water right now is a very complicated and evolving and changing situation. So one of the scenarios that you're referring to is when the governor imposed an executive order that has now been replaced with another executive order, but when that earlier one was in place, that was the one that restricted on how we calculated water savings and had to use that to demonstrate a 20% reduction. That, that mandate is no longer in place, so that no longer applies.
Comments? Okay. Any...
I have some comments.
No, go ahead. Bill, start our comments off.
Okay. Well, we've had a lot of discussion about option of industrial use, reuse of this property. Frankly, that's been around for 25 years, and I don't know that there was any effort to market it as industrial. They may have been, but it has always been a holding zone for this property ever since I can recall. So, and frankly, there's frankly no market for new industrial buildings because we still have, there's plenty of vacant industrial out there for anybody to be interested in it. So I think industrial is something that has just been a holding zone in there, and so, and this, this is something that's come forward to take its place or propose to take its place. You know, back in 1998, when we first entered into SOAR, we basically did, made a bargain with, with the people. We said, "We will, we will not step out over the boundary of, of the city urban boundary and develop in the, what is now county lands and county unincorporated areas. In exchange, the city council will consider projects within the boundaries to meet the needs of its community." And that's been basically the bargain for those 18 years, and it's worked pretty well. We've recently seen that they've been a change in that bargain with the SOAR group, but that's another matter for another time. So this is simply taking a piece of vacant land that was never intended to ultimately even undersaw to be, and be agricultural. And we need to convert to urban uses, some of these properties, because frankly, there is a growing shortage of housing in this county and this city. You only, what's going on with the sale, the sale of property, the spiraling increases that are going on recently. Penny Tick can tell you what's going on in the resale market of, of single-family homes in this community. It's, it's gone nuts. And we now have single-bedroom apartments going for $2,000 rent a month, maybe more. So, and that's only because of supply and demand. They wouldn't get it if there was overexcess of, of housing. So this is, this is needed. We have not ever caught up with the housing we lost in the five to six years of that recession back earlier in this decade. And the other problem is, the other thing is that we, I think we need to provide some housing for the, make at least available for people that are either living or working or attending school at Channel Islands. Because if we don't, over time, they, they will be building more homes out there. And I don't think it's a good idea that we, homes to finance the university initially, but I don't think we want to build a city out there. And unless we provide some housing in, inside the city, that's what's going to happen. And so I would think that we would want to be proactive in this and try to keep that from happening to us. We don't need another city out there at the university. So for all these reasons, I think it makes sense. It has, it'll take care of the housing needs, at least for now. And we're still talking probably a year and a half, maybe, maybe two years before this ever gets into reality and starts using water. So who knows what's going to happen then? So I'd be supportive of this.
Sorry.
Charlotte?
I thought he was finished. Excuse me. I agree with Mr. Little. I was on the council in 1991 when we changed this to industrial. I've sat here for 25 years and watched it do nothing. We could, they, you know, a lot of things could have happened. They could, real sites and people in Camarillo seem to work elsewhere. People in our industrial sites seem to come from elsewhere. And if you don't believe that, just try to get off the freeway at Dawson and then sit there for a little while, and you'll see all these cars coming from the north, coming around. But I don't think that this will ever, will become industrial. It just hasn't. Years, I touted this as what I thought would be private student dorms, and everybody laughed at me. I still think it's a good place for stu... But a lot of the, all of the rental units and a good part of the condos be rented by, by students, I believe. The, unless they like students, other people would be crazy to rent those places.
Yes. Maybe once.
Yeah, maybe once. Yeah. Yeah, maybe once. No, I, I just think that that is a great place for, for, for students in, in that parquet. If you want to call it a parquet, I guess that's a new term I'll have to put in my name to get more serious. I think that a lot of the other units will buy, be bought by either parents or by other people who will then put students in them. Something we have to, to be concerned about, but I'm sure staff has taken a look at that. The other thing, and this is another thing I agree with Mr. Little on, I can remember the council meeting, it must have been the first council meeting in November, Curb and SOAR passed, and Bill Liebman was still on the council. I just hope everybody realizes what they just voted for. They just voted and we, it's going to become denser and people cannot complain about that. This is fairly dense housing, but that is part of what happens and there's no problem with that. But you either have to go up or you have to get closer together. So considering that, considering that I think that this, I've thought for many, many years that this was the perfect place for student housing and considering that I've sat here for 25 years and watched nothing happen on this site, I, I can support it.
Jan?
Say it. I think the biggest thing and the most important thing why we seem to think we have to build on every square inch of this land, so it's set for 25 years, maybe it's set for another 10 years, but let's leave something for the future to develop. The university isn't today what you there. When we were back supporting converting that Hostile Vista, we didn't want an area that was, the problem you have with what you just articulated was that people are out, but when you have all these townhomes that are individually owned and rented out to students, you lose control over that. And the university will tell you that. That's why they like their kids in dorms, because they can control them. And when you put them out into a city in a, in a situation like, say, who's going to want to live there when it's mostly full of college students? Just a bedroom community, I think jobs are just as important as housing. Of housing in the queue right now, and I disagree with Mr. Little on the recession, all that time that recession was going on, other cities weren't building. And no, with those houses getting in the queue, they're just now starting to need this project now. Because what are you going to do in 2021 when you have to bring the numbers then? You know, what are you going to do? It's just let this continue the way it's been. We don't need to make it housing in order to have it inside of the street at Dawson. When we worked on the day what it was, we didn't, we wanted it to be that level so those small businesses could operate without feeling, isn't the best thing for that either because you've got that conflict, Lewis off of, off of Dawson. Introducing those houses, I just don't think it's the best use, at least it didn't in and made an offer. So I don't think it's something that, and they don't own the property, so they haven't bought it yet.
Kevin?
Well, I'm starting, I'll tell you why. You may very well be right about our infill and redevelopment and we very well may see a shot than it is now. I might not see it in my lifetime, but it, it may very well happen. I, specifically for rentals, and I'm struggling with that. And I have to tell you that, I'm very struggling with that. I understand that there's a need for student, the university as well, and that there may be two, and a lot of them are here already. The traffic study's been done. You've done everything that we've asked you to do and you've done it the right way. It is to live not only in Camarillo, but all in Southern California. But the fact that, this makes me most uncomfortable about this, is the fact that I'm really concerned that a lot of maybe that we could get them for purchase out there. I think that would be a better long-term strategy for this. Uncomfortable with this proposal, and if anybody can convince me otherwise, that some of my issues here are unfounded, certainly I'd welcome that. An opportunity for younger people and senior citizens and those in retail like I'm in, we could do that. I think that would be a really beneficial.
Okay, I've got a few things. Let me do mine first.
Okay, and then I'd like to go back because I completely forgot to talk about. I wanted to get in that this is part of the Dawson Drive specific plan. It was added by the people who did the, studied, but they thought it'd be really good to add it. So they don't agree with the Dawson Drive specific plan, and I have no problem whatsoever voting to change it.
I think originally I voted against industrial way back in 1991 because I just didn't think it needed to be there at that time. Things have changed, times have changed. We have a university now, we didn't have it then. A lot of people need housing. You're talking next several years, they've agreed to that many new students. There's a whole lot of things for using water in industrial, a lot more people in industrial area. Our rentals are going up because that's, that's impacting us too. When we talked about, Kevin, this is for you, because I don't see four living there, but I can see two, maybe three. Numbers riding our trolley are students there, and it hasn't been built either, sitting for years. We've got a lot of vacant, your properties over on, if you go on Flynn Road, I'll take you and show you some. We've got a lot of industrial vacancies. I think it's time for us to look and say, and you did a good job. We got the university. Now let's support, let's support.
You need to say it, but when we have a public hearing like this, we're supposed to, and whether you've had input into the project other than at this public hearing, and I need to declare that I have not, and I would suggest that perhaps the other council members should make that public.
Well, I did speak to the applicant, like most applicants called.
Talk to them.
I know what I got. I got the.
Conversation to my recollection with them either.
My only conversation was with the applicant with regard to.
Two.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
That's the law, by the way.
That's fine. Okay.
And Valley Road from industrial to approximately 28, I didn't see the point.
Yeah.
2.81 acres of commercial mixed use.
Motion second, please vote.
From 22.69 acres of M1 light manufacturing to 19.88 acres of element, 15 dwelling units per acre maximum and 2.18 acres of commercial mixed use CMU, and Pleasant Valley Road further described as change of zone number 321.
I move to waive the meeting of the title and to introduce an ordinance approving CZ 321 to change the zoning designation of only 19.88 acres to residential plan development.
The choice between industrial and housing. That's exactly what we're looking at. And so it's whether you want to see industrial there.
You could have residential, you could have something different. It doesn't mean that.
No, we're voting on zonings right now. Thank you. McDonald and Mr. Kilde voting against? Okay.
Into two parcels, Lot 1 and 2, and to further subject to, for condominium purposes. Earlier this evening, the city council approved the general plan amendment 321 and an amendment to the Dawson commercial and residential project on the site and the tentative tract map. The north by the Village Gateway, to the east, the primary vehicle access to, pointer here, so you can see it right here for the mixed use, and this will be a signalized intersection up here for the, the townhome development and somewhere along the northeast corner. And at, I've done, there. Recommended conditions, all as a mitigation monitoring plan, suitable for the development and at, and at the proposed density, unlikely to cause environmental damage or health problems, won't be bonus and will provide additional housing opportunities in the community. Conditions, if after the public hearing, the city council agrees with the request and suggested action, would be a motion to adopt the resolution approving tentative tract 5963, subject to the.
And commission. Can you tell us a little bit of little driveways, not little apron?
I, I heard you ask a question earlier about whether the commerking, the commercial has 13 cars of parking per thousand and the highest in any other city I've ever developed in, and I've developed in something around 16, 17 that, that's required, that's medical, restaurant, whatever. Is two and a half cars per unit. They have their, they have their own garage, which is attached, it's built, so you walk up the stairs into the unit.
So they don't have driveways in front of them or beside them?
It's not, no, not like a single family, no. The, the guest parking, is that what you're looking for, is spread out pretty much around the.
Individual townhouse does not have a designated parking.
Good, distance in the, between the garage doors is 32 feet. However, the, the city doesn't want people parking back there. You could park parallel behind the road. Also does make it look a lot nicer, but we.
Yours is very similar to Village at the Park. My daughter lives.
And do the, and, I'm sorry.
I just want to kind of further add to the, your parking question. The townhome closed parking stalls and 171 open spaces on, on that parcel, which is parcel two here, and then 15.
So that's for the, the apartments and the commercial. Townhouses then will have no parking adjacent to their individual townhomes, other than in their own garages?
There, there is guest parking on the, on the streets.
They say, where does grandma park when she comes to visit? Grandma has to walk down the street and it's just absolutely drives us all out of our minds. I don't know who can find a place to park and they can't, and you bring your groceries home out of acreage, but you're building homes that forever, that's my personal opinion.
I have a question.
Kevin?
Are the garages going to be for two cars? Will there be a two-car garage?
Yes.
The other two parked.
So you have two cars, parking spaces all gone. Is your mic on, Bill?
Yes. That turned off. There it is. Okay, thank you. About, about two years ago, we changed the parking requirements for multiple fashions substantially, as I believe, I understand.
Is, and the development limited the number of bedrooms to three, in each unit, three or less, in order to comply with the updates.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Bring it out again. Cars for?
I assume those cars are all.
Well, let's try it again. Jerry Marcel.
That was, he was just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I have no comment except to correct what I said earlier, that I said the new ordinance, it was, used to be 2.4, now it's 2.6, and the long.
Did you make it that long a walk so that grandma would not come to visit?
Uh, the units.
Great improvements or Village at the Park where you have one car garage on each unit and you've got to walk a whole lot longer than that to get the parking space. Okay, Penny Teague. Great, thanks Penny. Martin, Matthew Lorimer.
He's gone.
Good. Oh, I'm sorry. He's gone, Matthew's right there.
Mr. Titlebaum, I, items A and B.
Yeah, he was.
We, we already have his comments.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, I wasn't planning on speaking, but since I'm here, I've owned, and it wasn't that long ago, I was in, the plan is for people to buy these and rent to college students, and it's a three-bedroom. There aren't going to be three people living there. There's going to be between four and six people living in that house, so.
The 26 unit, or 23 units, the other was put.
Majority theoretically could be, and you're saying we're going to add 4,900 college students over the next few years, but only 100 apartments? So they're probably going.
With their families. You're right.
Sure.
Can I ask my question? Would you want to live in where you lived in college today?
No. Not with my two-year-old daughter.
Would you want to live in that?
And if it's, if it's full of college students, I don't.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
I wouldn't buy there. No, I would not buy.
Idea that we're going to build a huge dormitory out there, and that's absolutely probably is going to be as far from the truth as you can get. These are going to, a lot of, as someone said, the majority of the, there's a huge demand for three bedrooms in this city for larger families. We don't have many three-bedroom units. We haven't built any yet, Joe, have we, in, since you've been here or no?
Well, we do have some under construction now.
We do, now.
Springville.
Well, the fact of the matter is, there are going to be a lot of demand for this by families. And it, so I'm, some students get scattered among the, I think it's be a healthy interchange, but I don't think we're going to be opening this thing up for another, you know, what is that?
Out in Village at the Park and that big complex, seems like it's done okay. There've been no problems. And I'm sure there's three or four living together, no problems. I just want to bring that up because this other's going to be different because it's going to be, it's not going to be apartments, it's going to be.
Buy one of those, buy a three-bedroom one rented out to six college students, you paid your mortgage plus. And that's what's going to happen. We have a lot, and it's amazing when you look at the number of investors who have bought in this town, particularly when the resettlement, all the number.
I have a question. Is there going to be a homeowner association with this? Can they set rules on how many students they can run out to? Thank you.
I don't think you can. Making his head.
City attorney's reaching.
Yeah, I'd be reaching if I gave an answer. I'm not sure if you can limit it by the CCNRs or not. I'd have to look into that. Do you, do you know the answer, Joe?
I don't think. I've been through this too, and Joe and I are of the same mind per, per the, you know, the, the problem is, is in federal law, the definition of family is such that you cannot constitutionally limit the number of people in a household because of the really amorphous definition of family.
I'd like to see that.
Absolutely, I know that perfectly.
Okay, any?
Close the public hearing?
Yeah, close the public.
It's a real duh that it's going to be a lot of college students there, and when I was trying to get all of you in the Dawson, you were wanted and, well, you didn't necessarily want it, but you agreed that this was going to be something other than a large apartment complex, so I'm going with it because it's going to provide housing for college students. Opt a resolution approving tentative tract 5969, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and I have to tell you, there are 200 even conditions of approval for this.
Second item.
We have a motion second, please vote.
Mr. Mayor, I should say that I wasn't guilty of the Dawson Drive discussion that Councilmember Craven just mentioned. I wasn't on the council, so.
That's right.
Okay, that passes three to two with Ms. McDonald and Mr. Kilde objecting. Okay, item number C, resolution certifying subsequent final EIR 14-2, airport and airport north specific plan amendment, approval of agreement regarding general plan amendment and zone change, introduction of the, an ordinance approving change of zone 322 for Springville, et comma LLC, Bob Selig.
Applicant owner Bob Selig has requested that the public hearing be continued to September 28th, so the appropriate action would be to open the public hearing tonight, accept any public testimony, and then continue the item with the public hearing open to September 28th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is this the parcel we've had discussions on in the past?
Yes.
For special, specialized retail?
Yes, and it, the application does include an agreement between the city and that there be the provision for a regional destination retail use as part of any commercial development on that property. So without getting into the details, we will provide a more thorough staff presentation on September 28th.
We'll open a public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to address us on this item?
They all left.
Being done, we'll close the public hearing.
You don't, you don't want to do, you don't want to do that. Do you want to reopen the public hearing?
Yeah, reopen the public hearing.
Okay, reopen the public hearing.
And it'll be continued.
I'm so anxious.
It's being continued to September.
We'll continue this till September the?
28th.
28th. Now I can close the public hearing.
No. You're going to continue the public hearing.
No, I don't mean that. I mean adjourn, recess our session.
No, we're going back to page four of the agenda.
Oh, God, I forgot about that. Jesus. Forgot about that.
Master agreement authorizing affordable housing.
Exactly.
Oh, no.
Okay, item number C.
C.
Wait, wait, where are we? I'm sitting here reading what she's doing.
C.
Community development, number B, not C.
B?
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Morgan. Oksana Buck will be presenting this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan and council members. Springville Townhome Project has been approved for the development of 99 for-sale townhomes and a 5.76 acre site located on the south side apartments. The conditions of approval for this project require the developer to provide three affordable townhomes and have an affordable housing agreement with the city. townhomes and have an affordable housing agreement with the city. The three affordable townhomes will consist of one very low two-bedroom unit, which will be sold at approximately a hundred thousand, one very low-income three-bedroom unit, sold approximately at a hundred-twenty-five thousand, and one low-income unit, which is going to be three bedrooms, and sold at approximately two-hundred-sixty-five thousand. The affordable units will be dispersed throughout the development, consistent with the city policy, to ensure that they're not concentrated in one part of the development, and they will remain affordable for thirty years. In order to meet the current state law and the city's municipal code, staff and city attorney enhance, and those enhancements include capping the resale value, which ensures that the resale price does not exceed what's allowed by state law, allows the city to capture a share of appreciation of the affordable units when they are resold. This will provide a small revenue source to be used towards affordable housing programs. We also enhance the resale agreement for more effective administration. This includes adding definitions and details on units, such as the bedroom count and affordability levels, so that we're not referring back to the master agreement each time an affordable unit is resold. And staff recommends that city council approve and authorize the city manager to execute the master agreement prior, prior to issuing any building permits for RPD one-ninety-three, and staff's available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, um, to get these affordability, it's a trade-off that, um, it's going to offset the RV parking there, right? That's what's going to kind of make this whole equation work, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Other question? Yeah?
Here, have we done that in other projects?
No, that's, and it's compliant with state law and our municipal code, it just hasn't been implemented in the past.
Is it a requirement, or it's a choice?
Well, it's a requirement of state law and our municipal code.
You have to do it, or you can do it?
We must be doing that.
And do they give you the percentage, or?
We have an example, actually, because we anticipated this question, so if you could pull up the slide.
I've put together a hypothetical situation where we would calculate what that equity share portion would be. So, for example, if we had a market rate unit that is four-hundred thousand, but it's sold at two-hundred-fifty to an affordable, to a low-income household, the city's initial subsidy is a hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is thirty-seven percent of the market value, three-hundred thousand, which has an appreciation of fifty thousand dollars. So thirty-seven percent of fifty thousand dollars would be the city's equity share, and that would have to be used for affordable housing programs.
But we don't, but under this program, we're not putting in the hundred-and-fifty thousand. Are we writing this down, or this is the builder that's having to do this, and the city's not putting money in, right?
Well, what it means is that as the property gains equity, just through natural price appreciation, the city does obtain a share of that that goes back into the housing program.
Now I'm asking about the city's initial subsidy. What's, what is that?
Developer.
Yeah, it's not the city. That's what I'm having a part, yeah. So we're not putting money into the project. We're requiring the developer to do it in-
That's right.
But we get the, but it says the city subsidy, that means we get it.
Well, that is, because the city, comes back to the city, so we interpreted that, that the money actually comes back to the city, because we subsidize it through our initially, but it wouldn't exist without putting together this affordability restriction and covenant and agreement.
But from a cash flow standpoint, you never put money in.
We don't.
So you got to take away that dollar sign.
Okay. But this allows us to have future, money's for future low-income housing, affordable housing.
I have a problem with calling it a subsidy.
I don't have a problem with the, so the city getting something back. We've supposed to have been doing this, and we haven't been?
State definition, so, actually, the, the state requirement calls it a, the local jurisdiction subsidy.
Yep.
But that, but it's in this, it's not in a, a situation where you actually put money into it.
That's absolutely correct.
It's actually this situation.
Yeah, the, the subsidy where the, the city restricts the unit at the affordable sale price, and market val, excuse me, and, and market value.
And David-
But there's actually no dollars going in from the city.
And we had discussed that this is a requirement of the state, and it's in our local municipal code, that we should have been doing this in the past, and we're just catching up with our updates to our affordable housing agreements now.
That's correct.
And how long has it been in state law?
Since two-thousand-six.
I have a hard time with that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I think we got it back in order now. We're moving in the right, right direction, getting money into our future affordable housing.
I, I, you know-
That's the way state says it, Charlotte.
No, I don't have a problem with it. I, I have a problem with the state or anybody else calling that a subsidy. I think it's a, uh, some, I think there's another term they should have devised, parquet or something.
A what?
Parquet or something.
Park.
I, I, but anyway, I don't have a problem with the concept, I don't have a problem with us getting money at the, sharing the equity. Excuse me. Uh, the only thing I have a problem with is the terminology, and so I'm, I'm not, not going to withhold a vote just because of that, I support it.
We got to get the state, because they do this all-
I'll move.
You moved the approval.
I'll second.
I'll move to authorize city manager to execute the master agreement.
All right, we have a motion second. Any other comments? Kevin, anything?
Uh, no, I just think the affordable is something important here.
Please vote.
Can I make a comment before I vote on this? This is one of the few times that I vote on anything having to do with Springville, where I'm going to actually vote on it, so I want to make it perfectly clear that I'm voting on the agreement, not on the project.
You don't oppose the agreement.
Uh, that's, uh, I don't think, uh-
All right, then I'll take it off, and I'll, I'll take it away.
We're going to remember this.
That passes five to, if it happens, that passes five to zero, with no objections?
Only the agreement.
Okay. Item number C.
You've yet to-
Master assessment authorizing affordable housing, imposing affordable housing, resale restrictions on real property, Comstock Homes, Ochi Investments.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. Oksana Buck will also present this item.
Okay, this is a similar presentation, but for Mission Oaks Townhomes. This project was approved to develop twenty-two buildings containing one-hundred-twenty-nine townhomes on eight-point-six-six-acre site located north of Highway one-on-one and to the south of Verdugo Way. The conditions of approval for this project requires the developer provide thirteen moderate-income house, townhomes, and has an affordable agreement with the city.
Okay.
The thirteen moderate-income townhomes will consist of ten three-bedroom units, sold at approximately four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, three two-bedroom units, sold at approximately three-hundred-sixty-five thousand, and the affordable units will be dispersed throughout the development to ensure that they're not concentrated in one part of the development, and they'll be affordable for thirty years.
Comments? Questions?
I have a question.
Question. Jen, go ahead.
Windfall for the city.
Go ahead, Jen.
Are you done?
I'm done. I said that.
Just about. We've made the same enhancements as we did for RPD one-ninety-three agreement, capping the resale value to ensure that it doesn't exceed what's allowed by state, adding the equity-sharing provision, and also enhancing the resale agreement for more effective administration. And that's it. The staff recommendation is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute master agreement.
Okay.
Got a question.
Now are you stopped? Because you stopped before, and I thought you were through. Mr. Kildee. Uh, Mr. Kildee. I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
You're really on a roll tonight, Mike.
Oh, I know.
Uh, are we going to get a windfall on this, like we will on the other? The, well, that, that, that money that gets billed after we get a share of it.
Yes.
Same sort of thing?
Same program, yes. That'll be implemented in all our future affordable housing agreements.
Okay. All right.
Other questions? Kevin?
Yeah, Joe, is this, um, oh, it's similar to the last one, but the recreational vehicle, is this somewhat of a common trade-off that, that has happened in the, in the past?
Yes, it is, in our current density bonus ordinance, if a development asks for a concession or a waiver, then they're required to provide, provide affordable housing as a, as a part of that concession.
That means the owners have to know that they're going to go find a rental space, if they go in that place.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions?
I do have a question. How come this one has to have only moderate?
Because this one complies strictly with our density bonus ordinance, where the other one had to comply with the Springville specific plan.
More to the point, the rules for, for for-sale projects, like condominiums specifically, have a different level of participation in density bonus law. In fact, for townhomes, it's ten percent. For, for, for other projects that are not condominiums, they, the developer has an option that can, where they can go, for example, five percent very low, and so that's why you'll see a different percentage for this one, like ten percent moderate versus five percent low, or very low on the previous one. The rules, the rules are a little bit different.
Other comments, Charlotte? Question?
Same comments as before, it's basically the same thing, but I will move to authorize the city manager to execute master agreement, authorizing affordable housing and imposing affordable housing resale restrictions on real property for RDP one-ninety-four.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second, but I have a comment. I've had my issues, I think that have been, you know, brought out in previous meetings about this, however, I do think the affordability is important here, so I will support this.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
And it's how special my vote was last, because I can't possibly do this one. One, I think this is a horrible project, a bill at twenty-four feet from an off-ramp, but I also think that just having, whether it's the law or not, the, giving up the RV and so forth, and then just going to moderate and not really getting down into the affordable, I think it defeats kind of the purpose of it all, so I will be voting no on this one.
Okay, Mr. Little, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, I have, got a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, you already did.
Okay, please vote. That motion passes five, or four to one, with Ms. McDonnell objecting. Uh, city attorney, you have no items, neither city manager? You have any items, Mr. City Manager? No. Okay. Now recess to close, we'll recess.
Uh, comments?
Oh, comments, yeah. Go ahead. Comments? Charlotte, why don't you start us off?
Okay. I attended a Ranch Foundation meeting on the third. I attended the, I did not attend the Vietnam Veterans Meeting last Friday, I had some kind of a problem developed just before the meeting. I learned this week, or last week, that when we, we approved, and I get these things mixed up, so Tom's going to have to correct me, but we have the water credit program, a water offset program, is that? What's the one where the toilets are involved?
That's the water credit program.
That's the water credit program. Okay. We adopted a water credit program, and the water credit program was for residences and businesses that were developed before low-income toilets came into play. Is that the one?
Low-income toilets?
Low-income. Yeah, well, they're probably-
Yeah, they were subsidized.
We were going to subsidize it by giving them a toilet, and all those houses that are older than nineteen-seventy-six probably are low-income, but I misspoke, so, thanks for making me realize that. They were for, before low-water toilets came in. And anyway, it was supposed to be for residences and businesses, and so now we learn, after the program's set up, that none of the toilets will comply with the ADA requirements, so none of the small businesses can use, can get, take advantage of them. So I want to know, is there a way we can change it now? Can we trade in some of those toilets and get some ADA-compliant low-flow toilets? Or what can we do? Because I think there are a lot of businesses out there that are using a lot of water and need this, and that was part of what sold us on this program. So maybe somebody can address that and bring it back as a change.
Or get different toilets.
Or swap out the toilets. That was a comment, I guess, but, uh... At the last meeting, just as the Southern California Edison representative was giving us an update on how good their service was, there was a large outage, you might remember, in my neighborhood. It happens every time they come.
Just wanted to remind you.
And during the process, in the next eight hours or so, of trying to figure out what was wrong, they, uh, tore into four corners, two of them, three of them at Las Poses and Temple, and one of them at Temple and Via Corza, and they patched the holes up, sizable holes, with asphalt, not slurry seal, but asphalt, and it's been sinking through the last month. And so, earlier this week, Tidwell came and jackhammered out a bunch of concrete and filled in two of them, and I was just wondering when those other two holes are going to be filled in permanently.
That work would be performed under an equation permit, I don't have a definite schedule. We, I'll find out what the schedule is on that.
Well, I'm hoping they didn't just leave thinking they'd done the whole thing.
No, we have our public works inspection, inspectors, you know, we'll look at all that work, and we'll make sure that's done appropriately, and I can find out a better idea of the timing and let you know.
Okay, thank you. And I wasn't able to go on Monday, but I was wondering if, what happened, if staff attended the eight-oh-five area code hearing, and what-
Been on TV.
I don't watch TV, I'm sorry.
They're definitely going to change it, I don't know if that's going to affect us or not.
Yes, Councilmember Craven, I did attend the CPUC meeting on Monday, where they did discuss the recommendation to do an eight-oh-five area code overlay. They did not, however, rule out or dismiss the fact that they could also do a split, although they have not done a split in the last nine years in any area, and I believe in the last twelve years in California. There was a number of comments made by individuals, apparently with the overlay, one of the drawbacks is the fact that you would have to dial a one plus the ten digits, and that would be for any call. The positive aspects to that are that you would not be splitting the region and, and imposing a new area code on, on people where they would be forced to change letterhead, business advertising, business cards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There would require some programming for machine-to-machine calls to incorporate the one plus the ten-digit, but it is a lot less onerous than, than the, the split would be. There were a number of people that spoke on the effects to the elderly, that it would be more difficult for them to do the one plus ten versus just changing an area code, and the handicapped as well were, were mentioned in that, and there were a number of people that spoke in favor of the overlay, but wanted to be sure that the word got out and in enough languages and interpretations, so everyone would be able to understand.
If I had gone, I had planned to say that a good portion of Camarillo is already on Fios, and all of us on Fios are already dialing ten numbers.
And that's also true with most cellphones, that because they're so varied, that most people do put the area code into their-
Well, on my, on my Verizon cellphone, I don't have to do that, but on my Verizon landline, I have to dial ten numbers.
To go where?
To dial next door.
I don't.
We do.
Oh, my goodness, I don't.
I don't.
Other side of town, I guess, huh?
Well, I guess that's what you get for living over there.
Living out in the country.
Okay, I have one more thing, and I wanted to remember a former city council, no, a former city employee who worked for the city from 1990 to 2005. No, from 1990, well, I don't have my glasses on, so I'm sorry. But he worked for the city for 15 years. And he passed away since our last meeting. It was George Casciano. He was a code enforcement officer and he was a very nice gentleman. I remember him well. And I remember when he developed a problem, he was hospitalized for a long, long time, just before he left the city. And we were getting reports that he had diabetes and that a foot would have to be amputated. And his mother stuck by him. And his mother said, no, you can't do this yet. I know there's something else. I know there's something else. So they told her they'd have to amputate his foot just, you know, to save his life. And it was going to have to be done right away. They finally got down to the deadline. And she went home and started searching through everything she could. And she looked in his shoes. And in one of his work boots, she found a black, a brown recluse spider. And she took that in and they gave him the antidote and it saved his foot. And he said that when he finally could come back to work, he said that he felt the Lord had saved his life, so he was going to go and become a minister and try to save other people's lives. And according to his obituary, he did just that. He was in Texas. And so anyway, I just thought I'd do that. And I'd kind of like to ask you to close in memory of George Casciano.
If I can add just something. George was, was one of our, I think he was the second or third city inspector, code enforcement inspector.
Third.
Third. And he, he, he got a lot of things started in that program that's carried on today and basically shaped the initial foundations of that program. So he did a nice job for the city.
Okay. Jan?
I have a question on the area code. Did they talk about if they do a split, where that split would be?
They did not. They did not go into detail. They did say originally that, that it was not feasible to do it, but then they didn't discount that, as I said. But they didn't give us any other information about where a split would occur because the preference is the overlay.
They didn't tell us who'd get carved out. Okay, thank you. I just have one other thing. At our last meeting, we were talking about water and we were trying to talk about saving our urban forests. And I think the next day or shortly thereafter, I opened the paper to see an article and the headline says, "Plan to Cover 25% of Phoenix With Trees."
I saw that.
And I thought that was just perfect timing and, and very appropriate because it says, "The Southwest Capital Presents a Distinctive Postcard: Brutal Heat, Desert Peaks, Sbrawing Subdivisions, and Endless Asphalt." Therefore, their goal is to have 25% of the city covered by the year 2030. So there's a town out in the middle of the desert that says, "We need our trees." So the moral of our story is we need to take good care of our trees.
They've gotten more rain in the last five years than we have.
Probably, but that won't go on forever.
It's called flooding.
And wash out their trees. Anyway, I thought that was very timely and you know how I like trees.
What's funny is that same lady that took those trees down there, gave them 25,000 trees, it's an organization, it's a nonprofit, the city got those trees free.
Some of them.
And that she lives here in Camarillo.
Why didn't she give them to us?
And we're working with Cam Springs right now. They've asked me to call her again about replacing trees that were burned during the area and some others. So that point will be made soon. I'll be going out there with her if she's home to see if we can get some trees put up out there at their own homeowner association, of course, get their trees free, but then make sure they get water. So I'm very familiar with that program. Okay, Bill?
Well, I was out of state for a good portion of the time. We were on vacation, so I didn't attend any thing other than, I did it before leaving, attended the police night out with, that was, I think all of us did that. It was a lot of fun. Mayor Morgan and I met with the state librarian last Friday. He was visiting the city library and they were having a meeting with him. And we were invited over, I think all of us were invited over to, I think Charlotte went too, didn't you, Charlotte?
I wasn't able to go.
Okay. But we, we attended and it was, he's, he's a nice fellow. And did attend the annual Donz and Donias Pleasant Valley Historical. It's always a nice program. But one thing I wanted to mention, I, I just saw this today, got a, as we always do, the flyers that are going to go out in the water bills. And this is one from ourselves to the, to the water users about the change in our conservation program from stage two to stage one and why and everything. I just, I don't know who wrote this, but it was, it's extremely well done. It's understandable. Doesn't have a lot of jargon in it and it, it's, it's, it's going to, if, if you can't understand this, you're, you're just not going to understand it. So whoever's to do this is to be commended. Thank you.
Kevin?
Attended just, just two meetings, the VRSD and the Investment Committee. And we're looking at our investments here. We're not making much money on them, but, you know, we're still, we're still sunny side up, so that, that's the good thing. I did attend the Donz and Donias and obviously the night out with all the other council members, I believe, as well. A lot of fun. And kind of an eventful summer here, which is probably a good thing. So now we get into the fall. So that's a, that's a good thing too, because it's football, right?
I can't wait.
And that's it.
Okay, I've got a, I didn't go anywhere, so I've got a lot of things to report. Gavi Maria's, that was the old Texas Cattle Company, had a grand opening and was there to cut the ribbon. And nice lady, she lives in Ojai, but she makes good Mexican food because it was very good. Sister Cities were here for four days and we took them around on a boat, in fact, our group took them on a boat ride from here to Encinita and Catalina.
Did you go?
From here?
Yes.
No, we, we took them out to the, you know, out of Long Beach. And our group, we paid for it, our group did.
Did you go?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And so we, I got to use my Spanish all four days, so it's fine. It absorbs you again. Then we have a Good Time Revival ribbon cutting. That Good Time Revival doesn't, isn't what is indicated there. It's, you know where the Tattoo Parlour is?
No, I don't.
Down there by, across from, across from the, yeah, across from the chapel. Right next door is a motorcycle place with some real old motorcycles, like a museum. But they got two chairs in the back, the old chairs, where they give haircuts too. That was a little interesting ribbon cutting. I hope they make it. I don't know, I'm not going, I've got my hair, I got my guy. Then we have Cops Night Out. We all did that, that day that we went around. Unfortunately, we should, hopefully have more homes next time. Casa. Charlotte and I went to the Casa meeting and up in Monterey, we've talked about that. On the way back, I had a chance to look at Lake Ochuma. I told my wife, I've got to see Lake Ochuma. Lake Ochuma is like this, okay? Not counting the part over here, sometimes it's full, sometimes not, where it feeds in through Paradise Road. But it's here. And all the bottom has got green grass on it. It's that, it's that empty. And they're going to be in trouble up there for water if, if something doesn't happen. But I didn't take any pictures, but.
Not something, rain.
Well, they need a lot of rain. We had a Vietnam Vets ad hoc committee and Charlotte was sick. I said, Charlotte won't miss this, but her husband came and said you've gotten sick by something. Anyway.
I don't know what got me sick, but I was sure sick.
Yeah. Anyway, that meeting was, it, it was, just caught us back up again where we are in our next event on the, what, 17th? 17th is our next event. And you want to tell them about it, Mr. City Manager, or get you involved in this?
The next event on the 17th is a, is a concert by the Navy Southwest Quintet. There will also be a speech by Captain Yonki of the base. And yeah, it's going to be a nice, nice, nice event. The reason why it's on September 17th is because that's the weekend of National POW MIA Remembrance Day. And so, you know, looking at all the different holidays that are around this time of year, that was one that we landed on. And so there'll be a special emphasis on, on that.
And we're working on a third and fourth one now, so that'll come down the line. Okay, we had a crossing guards breakfast. I think several of us went to that. Charlotte, you were there too. And you, Jan, did you show up? I forgot. Okay, we all showed up for the crossing guards breakfast. And that was, of course, we let them know how much we appreciate what they do. I had an interview with Time Warner, it's a five-minute interview, telling what's going on in Camarillo. It goes that quick when you're interviewing with them in five minutes. But just talk about the water, which she talked about, took almost all the time. And then I took a little bit about the budget and let them know how well we're doing and so on and so forth. So it went that fast, but I think it did well. We presented ourselves well. Ribbon cutting at Xander's Game House. Xander's Game House is over by Reyes, you know, the, right there, El Rey. It's right there between El Rey and, and the corner. And it's something completely different because you go in there and play games. You can go and play games, board games and tables and whole shot. And they have standing, what do you call it, the chess set, that you can stand there and play the other guy and move your pieces around. So I think it could be a lot of fun for the, the city. I hope they make it. Library staff, Bill and I met with the library staff and again, it went well and the staff was in there for a meeting with them. And they asked me just to welcome and let them know a few things, and so I did. But Lompoc, also went to Lompoc. We had a channel, channel meeting in Lompoc. And all the way up there, we got to watch the fires. Because this time I went back as there was huge smoke coming. We ate, we ate on the pier and just watched that smoke come over the hill. Unbelievable. But we got down to the league meeting in Lompoc and your little, your little map and your computer, it's not exactly correct. Everyone said the same thing. We met at senior center at the end of a shopping center. Well, the shopping center was the address, but the address on the side too. Anyway, it was a good meeting. We had a lot of people show up. We had the fire chief, or the police chief talk to us. That was our speaker. I've seen a lot of police chiefs, but this guy was very, very good.
Not that I was.
Pardon me? I said I've seen a lot of police chiefs and this guy was good. He's been to three different cities and so he had a lot to talk about. Donz and Donias picnic at the community center. Because they held the community center, there was a lot more people. That place was packed. And they did.
They had an silent auction.
And they had a silent auction. And they also, you're on, you're up there, you're not out there with the bees, I'm sorry, the wasps and things at Oak Grove Park. And so I think that's why more people showed up. But it was very good, food was good, so we had a good time. Filipino celebration, it's their 20th year celebration. They invite me to come out and say hi for the city and so on. Investment committee, we met.
Monday.
Met Monday. And I have to thank the city manager because there was a question that came up about why Leif, their funds were so low in their CDs. And you got the information and explained it. That was very good. Okay, one more thing. We have a place called the, and I hadn't been there before, Constitutionale, where they moved from over in Dawson, off Dawson, that area, over to the new place. Busy. This is on like Tuesday, 2 o'clock. You still have 30 people in there. And they've got so, I'm not a huge beer drinker, but they got so many different flavors that they mix with this beer. It's really good. And it's got good pizza too, so. Anyway.
Can I give a little story? For years, George Urb, business.
Did you turn that off?
I didn't turn it off.
Okay, you turned that up there on then.
Twisted, I think.
Here, you.
There it is, yes.
There you got it.
Okay. For years, George Urb has put out signs for events at the ranch, no parking, no parking. Now he's putting out signs for no parking for Institutionale. They are taking over that whole area.
You would like to see what it looks like at nighttime, if that's what it was at 3 o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday. Well, that's all I have this evening. So we will recess. Oh, yes. We got it, we'll have to come back and do that.
You could, you could do it now.
We can do it now?
Yeah. And you could just say you, you will be adjourning in the, in the memory.
Okay. We'll be adjourning now, but we'll go to closed session. And I'd like to adjourn in the name of George El Casciano. He's one of, like it was mentioned by Charlotte, one of our former employees, is a great little guy. So we will now recess to close, or to study, closed session, excuse me.